Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Brookline School Committee meeting, December 17th, 2020, on this very snowy evening. I hope everybody is warm. And you know, the good news about all this is that we can just do it from the comfort of our home. We don't even have to go out to town hall. So there you go. As I said just a moment ago, we are going to be changing things around a little bit, but we will get through as much of the agenda as we can. And we are going to put a few things off to January 7th, just because we have so much to cover tonight. And we want to get to those items that need to be done in a timely fashion for tonight. So we'd like to start with the consent agenda. Past record, acceptance of gifts. I think we'll go ahead and vote on the acceptance of gifts. And then we want to talk about one in particular, the mask coming from our partner in China. So but let's do that as a consent agenda. And then we have some items around construction. And we're going to vote on the Driscoll items after we talk about the Driscoll presentation. So I move to support the consent agenda. Do I have a second to that?
A second.
Thank you, Helen. Yep, got it. And any comments, questions before we vote? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to take a roll call. Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah, is Mariah here?
I'm here, yes.
Oh, there you are, Mariah. Thank you. Barbara?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. There's one gift in particular we'd like to, we have voted to accept it. Barbara, did you want to introduce this gift that we received from our exchange school?
Yes, we received 20,000 surgical masks from the Gaussian School. And I think this is such a thoughtful gift for them to send. We've had a long relationship with them. We have been part of, we've had, we've had a relationship with them for 20 years. Several of us have been to visit them. They have come here. They were here last year when we were checking the 20th anniversary. And I think it just, it really says to me that they value our friendship and in the same way that we value ours, not that there was ever any question. But I also want us to acknowledge that they sent these specifically for the school, the high school and the other Brookline schools so that they would have safe protection during the pandemic. And we have amended the response to them in to align with what was requested by the committee. So I wanted you to make, to make sure you knew that and to make sure you know that we very much value this gift and we value them as our partners in educating children around the world. So I would like to say thank you very much to the Gaussian School and to Grant and Judy, who are here with us tonight, who head that whole program up. So thank you from all of us. When you talk to people at the Gaussian School, please let them know how thankful and grateful we are for their very thoughtful gift.
Thank you, Barbara. Here, here. So thank you very much. It's a very thoughtful gift. And they will be, the mask will be distributed to staff as well as students at the high school and then our other schools as well. So Judy or Grant, would you like to say a word? Sure.
Please, thank you. My name is Judith Katz. On behalf of the China Exchange Steering Committee, thank you, all of you, for inviting us to say a few words about this gift of 20,000 surgical masks from our Gaussian School partners in Xi'an, China. When exchange teacher Steve Lantos sent us a photo of the boxes, we were very moved by the labels placed on them. Each box has a large sticker with the logos of the Gaussian School and Brookline High School side by side and the words "Together Stronger." This is symbolic of the relationship that China and the United States could and should have as we confront the pandemic and other global challenges together. The importance of our two decades-long exchange program is underscored by this gift in light of the pandemic in which international cooperation and support are demonstrated by our Gaussian partners rather than confrontation that is more often expressed in current U.S.-China relations. Our Gaussian partners are putting into practice the values of global citizenship that the Czechs program embodies. The mission of the Brookline High School Gaussian Exchange Program is to foster mutual understanding between our two countries. Given the confluence of the pandemic and rising hostility towards China in the public narrative, it is more important than ever that this generous gift be acknowledged by our community and the Czechs Steering Committee stands ready to assist and support BHS and the district in this endeavor. I want to recognize and thank with great appreciation Karen Wong on our Steering Committee, who has mobilized the repackaging and distribution effort. She is coordinating with the schools and Brookline thrives so the masks will be distributed early next week to teachers and students before the winter break. This is a Herculean effort, and we are all very grateful for her initiative, hard work, and keen sense of diplomacy. I also want to thank Superintendent Jim Marini, Headmaster Anthony Meyer, and teacher Steve Lantos for collaborating with us on the distribution effort, discussing the possibility that the exchange might resume in spring 2022, and for their willingness to have a Zoom conversation with our Gaussian partners early in 2021 to resume our connections. Please let us know if you have any questions or comments. Thank you very much for allowing us to make this statement.
Yeah, thank you, Judy and Grant, and thank you to Karen as well on the Steering Committee. Thank you to all those who make it possible. I know it's a huge effort, but we've been doing it for many, many years. And this was certainly a wonderful, warm gesture. So thank you, thank you for all of that. So we'll move on now, if that's okay. As always, our presenters are welcome, our guests are welcome to stay as long as they want, but we don't expect that she will be here all evening, so that's your choice. I'm not seeing Superintendent Marini yet, so I think if it's okay. He's here. What are you pointing at?
I'm here, Susan.
Sorry, he's here. Here you are.
He's in the bottom corner of my screen, sorry.
Well, he is on mine too. Okay. Jim, are you ready for your student recognition? Or do you want me to go to Claire for a student?
No, I think I'm ready if you are.
I am ready for you. Okay.
Well, you know, with all that we're dealing with in the whole world, and the pandemic, and the snow upon snow upon snow, this is a wonderful evening and a terrific time to take a breath and say congratulations to some outstanding students. And I would like to take a moment, yeah, I know, I see everyone. Every year, we have, I'm, Betsy Fitzpatrick, who is outstanding. And if you don't know Betsy, you ought to know Betsy because she can organize the world in a heartbeat. And she actually said, every year, we have the distinct pleasure of honoring three Brookline High School seniors with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Award for Academic Excellence. Thank you, Betsy. I'm told that this night is a highlight of the school committee calendar as we have the privilege of hearing about some of our most accomplished students. Can't wait to get into that. Students who have demonstrated not just their academic potential and integrity, but also have shown great determination, perseverance, and strength of character. These students truly represent the very best of Brookline High School. And it really is my pleasure to welcome the following students and their families and their educators to our meeting tonight. Isam Al Najjar, Christine Kennedy, and Marie Vincent. I'm going to ask Kathy Wellen. Kathy, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, very good. And Kathy will take over at this moment, and she is going to tell us about Isam.
I am. So I'm Isam's guidance counselor, and I'm so happy to be here to represent him and share his story with all of you. And I'm going to just read a kind of a synopsis of, you know, his experiences so far. So Isam Al Najjar is a resilient young man who's overcome difficult life events while remaining committed to his education. He's excelled academically and currently is in the process of applying to college where he plans to major in engineering. When Isam arrived in Boston in January of 2017, he stepped off the plane speaking very little English, having just heard the word "Boston" for the first time earlier that day. When Isam and his family left Egypt that morning, they thought they were moving to North Carolina. But when they got to the airport, the plane tickets they received showed their destination to be Boston. They didn't know what to expect in Boston, but Assyrian refugees, who had been living in Egypt for the last four years, they hoped to be headed somewhere where they could feel safe and settled. Isam's journey up until he landed in Boston had been difficult. When he was nine years old, the Syrian military invaded his small town and killed many men and boys. This was in retribution for members of the town protesting against the government. Isam witnessed atrocities that no one should see. The next day, Isam and his family went to a neighboring village and stayed with relatives for a few months. They later learned that the military had burned their house down. Isam and his family then went to Egypt. They kept expecting that things would get better in Syria and they would be able to return home, but that did not happen. After four long years, UNICEF accepted them for their relocation to another country, and they then came to Boston. As soon as Isam began attending school in the United States, he made a positive impression on teachers. He received English Language Education Awards and was recognized for his perfect attendance in grade nine. Ms. Frost and Ms. Bee, two of his ELE teachers in grades 10 and 11, write, "Isam is always reaching for success and is a student who always makes class go well. He is committed to improving himself personally and academically, making the most of educational opportunities offered to him here. Despite all of the adversity and challenges that Isam has faced in his personal life, he has always looked at challenges with positivity. His experiences have made him more accepting and intolerant of others. Isam is a true leader, but not dominating, and is always focused on helping his peers. Other students have expressed gratitude for having had Isam in class and the opportunity to learn his story that they otherwise would never have been exposed to. Isam's English has improved by leaps and bounds. He's no longer in any ELE classes, and he is excelling in challenging mainstream classes. Isam plays on a local soccer team, is on the school's ultimate frisbee team, and easily makes connections wherever he goes. There's no question that he will achieve his goal of earning a college degree and attain a success in his future. He's very well deserving of this award."
Jim, you are on mute. Need to unmute, please.
Thank you. Wow. Kathy, thank you very much. What a life experience, and it is such an honor. Look, with all that you have been through and how you work and focus your time to such great achievements, it is absolutely extraordinary. I'm going to hold up a certificate for you to see in this camera. We are in the new world here. So are you able to see this? So yes, this is, this is your certificate from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and recognition of all that you have accomplished and continue to strive and to accomplish. We are so, so proud of you. Isam, I'm going to ask you, because we're in the new world, when you speak, you will be able to be seen. And this is being broadcast. So for people who are all cherry you on, who are not in this room, they would love to see you. So if you could just say hello, maybe introduce your mother and father, and then we will all see you. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So this is my dad, and this is my mom. And I just want to say, like, without my mom and dad, this won't be possible. But I just want to say thank you.
Well said, and really, who could say it better and who could say more? Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's a privilege to have you here. Wow. Okay, we're going to move on to, let me see. We're going to move on to Stephanie Hunt. Stephanie, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay, Stephanie, thank you. And can you tell us about Christine Kennedy?
I would love to. Hi, everyone. I'm Steph Hunt. I'm the coordinator of the African-American and Latinx Scholars Program at BHS, and it is an honor to be here speaking about Christine Kennedy. Christine's an outstanding student and a truly admirable individual. I'm lucky, as I have known her since her first year at BHS. She's consistently shown her dedication to her academics, not only in her grades, but through her actions. Christine has excelled in honors and advanced placement classes, displaying interest, curiosity, and an unwavering commitment to learning. Although an overall excellent student, Christine particularly enjoys English and writing. Christine has traits that an educator dreams of. Christine is one of those students who is bright, but also works hard and wants to surpass what is expected of her. Christine is always pushing herself. She's dedicated to her work, which is obvious by her summer commitment working with the Calculus Project and as a Whipple Writing Fellow. The Whipple Writing Fellowship offers BHS students, who love the written word, an opportunity to develop and expand their skills as writers. Christine worked with a cohort of fellow aspiring writers this past summer and received support from professional writers on how to craft her own original work. Christine's final product, a short fiction piece entitled "The Heirloom," is a story about a family of color, complex identities, and cultural appropriation. Christine's commitment to school is impressive, as are her affiliations within the school. Christine has been a part of the MEKO program since first grade and a member of the African-American and Latinx Scholars Program since ninth grade. She began writing for and performing in the spring play during her sophomore year and joined school within a school for her senior year. She continues to enrich each and every one of her communities, each and every one of the communities she is part of, making each, each one stronger, more thoughtful, and more dynamic. In addition to all that she has accomplished in academics and extracurricular activities, she has shown tremendous resilience as she has overcome significant medical concerns since being diagnosed with Pfeiffer syndrome as an infant. During her time in high school, Christine has endured multiple surgeries connected to treating Pfeiffer syndrome symptoms, never complaining about this hardship, and has continued to excel in each of her courses and activities. She has faced adversity with strength and conviction. She is amazing, and everyone who knows her has been so impressed by her. It is unquestionable that Christine will attain success in each of her future endeavors. And those of us who work with her at the high school will spend the years ahead looking on with pride. Congratulations, Christine. We, Ms. Hers, Dean Summer, Mr. Cottler, and Dan and I, and all of your teachers are so proud of you.
Wow. Wow, wow, Steph, very, very moving. Christine, congratulations to you. Boy, what a role model you are for the rest of us to have such stamina and such ability to face adversity and be so strong and show us what it means to excel and grow forward. And you have a book that you've written, you know. I, we'll see what, what other great things you do in the future. And remember, wherever you go, Brookline's always home for you. So keep thinking of us. This is the certificate, Christine, that's going to be mailed to you in your home. And I would like to ask you, as Isam did, if you could just say a few words so that your face will show on Zoom for the whole world to see.
Okay, so here are my parents, my siblings. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Christine. And it's great to have your teachers here supporting you as well. Boy, this is really an emotional night, isn't it? Holy moly. And finally, Paul Epstein. Paul?
Hi there.
Hi there. Are you going to tell us about Marie Vincent?
I am very excited to do just that. So the Superintendents Award, to me, is always one of the most meaningful honors bestowed upon a student as they near the end of their BHS journey. But this one really is extra special. Because Marie has faced so much adversity throughout her high school years, seeing her recognized in this way is an incredible joy for all of us. You know, I sometimes ask myself, how can I be so sanguine about Marie's future when so much about her past and present has been defined by uncertainty and a near constant demand for her to adapt and overcome? And the answer, quite simply really, is because I have never met a student, scratched that, a person whose inner strength and resilience even approached Marie's. Out of respect for her privacy, which Marie values greatly and guards ferociously, I won't say much about her challenges and what she's faced since arriving from Haiti only five years ago. But suffice it to say that for most of that time, Marie was, by necessity, much more concerned with and focused on the bottom tiers of the needs hierarchy than the loftier and more esoteric goals at the pinnacle of the pyramid. And just as Marie herself has had to work doubly hard to achieve all that she has achieved in and outside of school, I think it's fair to say too that Marie has made all of us, the esteemed members of Team Marie at BHS, work very hard as well to cement our status as card-carrying members of the fan club and support club for Marie. In fact, we worked pretty hard, as recently as just two days ago, just to convince Marie to graciously accept this honor tonight. And I'm glad that we did convince her. Marie, if nothing else, is a study in contrasts. Soft and hard, shy but boisterous, guarded but vulnerable, far away from home but always able to make a place for herself. Marie, we are all so proud of you. I know there must have been times when you yourself questioned if that inner strength I mentioned earlier was sufficient. I never did. Marie, you are kind, you are determined, you are funny, you are intelligent, and most of all, you are strong. Congratulations. And Marie, there's a little bit more because your wonderful guidance counselor, Marie Ellen Hers, also had to share some thoughts, which I'm going to read for her now. These are Ellen's words. Words that come to mind when I think of Marie are resilience, intelligence, strength, caring, maturity, and perseverance. One of her English teachers reports that Marie is, as they say in Boston, wicked smart. And in spite of her stressful high school years, Marie has always applied herself in school and in her coursework. In addition, Marie has made every effort to support herself by working several jobs over the past few years, knowing that she'll need to support herself in college and beyond. Marie has worked with children since 2018, first at a summer program for younger students who are new to the country, helping them to learn English, something she herself did recently. The next summer, Marie was a camp counselor. Most recently, just before the pandemic, Marie began working at a preschool. She assisted the teachers and cared for preschoolers from after school let out until 6:00 P.M. The preschool administrator loved Marie's work ethic and personality and quickly gave her more and more responsibility and a larger role with the kids. While Marie clearly has a gift for working with kids, it seems likely she will pursue a major and a possible career in the medical field. I join all of Brookline High staff, who have had the pleasure of knowing Marie, in saying a big congratulations and good luck to this independent and strong young woman. Congratulations again.
Wow, thank you, Paul. As you were making your comments, the word "strength of character" kept jumping in my mind. And boy, it's awfully humbling to be in the presence of people, young people who have done so much and have committed themselves to their future. It's just really, it's so, so impressive. Well, Marie, this little certificate is on its way to you in the mail. And we congratulate you, and I hope that you would say a word or two so that you will too show up on the Zoom.
Hi.
Hi.
So those are my guardians, and I just want to say thank you for the words. They're really nice and they really make a lot of people actually know my story, so thank you.
Wow. You know, it's wonderful to take time. And everybody's busy and all of that. But it's so wonderful to take time out of our schedules to be here and to honor young people who are not only working hard, but think about all the stories that we've heard and how they fill their time and how they think about other people and how they face difficulties and adversity and they rise to that challenge and they exceed and excel. You truly are deserving of these awards, each of you. And you know, this kind of an award is an indication. It's an indication that people believe in you. They, they understand what you're trying to do. They recognize what you're trying to do, and they believe in your goodness and your strength and your intelligence and your ability to achieve and touch the world in a different way. That is significant. As you go through life and you reflect back on your time in Brookline, know that your teachers believe in you. Your community believe in you. They're recognizing you. They're honoring you. They have great hope for you. And of course, we're going to hold on your coattails, and we're going to celebrate when you achieve. We're going to own some of that, some of that achievement too. So thank you very much. And I also want to thank the many teachers who are here, family members that are here, and also those who are watching via Zoom or on the internet, watching this presentation because they too are here to support you. And it's just a wonderful feeling. So congratulations. You'll get your certificates in the mail. And go get them because the rest of the year is here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I have to say, it's so heartwarming to hear the stories, but also to remember, this is the work that we are about. I think sometimes in the school committee, we get bogged down in, you know, how much, I don't know, toilet paper do we have to order or something, you know? And you know, really, this is what it's about. It's the whole team coming together. It's all the teachers. It's the family and support. And this is, this is why we're here, to make future citizens of the world who will do good work. And so this is, this has been a good moment, and thank you for that. Again, a reminder, people are welcome to stay as long as they would like, but you're also welcome to leave. It's no offense taken. So thank you all for joining us. Thank you. Jim, do you want to do with, I think with Susan perhaps, this possible vote on the COVID testing? Because I believe that that's going to advisory later tonight.
Yes, and Susan and I will do a little duet here to bring the committee up to date on efforts that have been made and have been ongoing with the assistance of Panel Four, the Town Administrator, Mel Klechner, the Treasurer, Dr. Jett. And Susan has been instrumental in really doing the research around trying to secure testing for staff who are facing students, teachers, staff. This is, and all, to test all voluntary basis, to test all for a three-week, is it a three-week period? 10-week period, 10-week period, sorry. In order to provide that other level of security and to help, if there is a spread, identifying early on so be able to control that, to provide safety for everyone. In order to do that, it's going to take some resources. And the, the Town Manager has requested the, from his board, the permission to seek a reserve fund transfer for $300,000 to support the school's effort, as well as $200,000 for the municipal effort. And we're going to ask the school committee this evening, Susan can add something in terms of the details of the program and how it may work, but ask the school committee to support the request for a reserve fund transfer to fund an asynchronous testing of faculty and staff on a voluntary basis. And it's, it's a very important thing to help keep the schools open and functioning. Susan, do you want to add to that?
That was a great summary. I was had a couple of things, which is that, you know, the people from Panel Four have been working so hard on this for months, literally months. And obviously, the first priority was to help stand up symptomatic testing. That was the empathy site in the town of Brookline. But then it's a little bit, it's been a very difficult road to try to get asynchronous, listen to me now, asymptomatic testing going. But through a lot of perseverance... But through a lot of perseverance and really good partnership with the town, it does look like this evening, the advisory committee will be considering additional funds for that. So just a very brief review, Panel Four had four sets of recommendations. One was about symptomatic individuals and close contacts and having an in-town option. There were two parts of that that are important. One is covering close contacts, which we've not been able to do yet, but we're all hopeful that that's going to be in the next contract with the town, with the provider in the town. And then the second is, which did happen, identifying funds to pay for anything that's reimbursable by insurance for people who are uninsured. So that the people who are uninsured residents and staff can have free tests. So that is going to be worked into the next contract that the town administrator is proposing. And there's a second piece, which is important for us, is that starting a program of voluntary weekly asymptomatic screening, testing of all student facing staff and teachers. And so in your packet, there's a little bit more detail about who that is. It's about 1,100 PSB staff are student facing at this point. It's a voluntary program, as the superintendent said. So it really is going to be at the discretion of the individual, whether this is something they want to do. There are a couple of different ways that it might happen. There are pooled options or individual options, I won't get into those details. But that is what our incredible head of school health services, Trisha Laham, and the team of nurses are going to help stand up for us with successful vote this evening at the advisory committee. Also included in this, and this is something that we can talk about, but there's budget for it, is two rounds of what's called bolus testing, which is for students, sort of all students. And so the priority grades that they've identified from a scientific point of view are grade six through 12. And so one of the, one of the options for that is to do it after extended vacation breaks, just to kind of set a, you know, reset things. But all of that is sort of TBD and it's sort of under the discretion of the superintendent and, and his staff. And so it's all in consultation with the Brookline Commissioner of Public Health, which is Dr. Swani Jett. So it's been a lot of effort, but, but I think a very, it's been such a high priority for all of us. We've been talking about this for a long time to do. And we're just really, really grateful for all the people who have put so much effort into structuring the programs and helping us think through what it would need to look like. And then so tonight is us voting to essentially ask for the reserve fund transfer. And Robin just sent you the motion, which, which we can talk about. But I'm happy to answer questions. You also have a two pager in your packet. With, it's been updated even in the last 12 hours. So that's, that's in your packet as well, but happy to answer any questions and just, you know, grateful for all of the staff work that went into this. And particularly, I have to say, Nira Pollak, Jenny Tam, and Grady Kloss were incredibly helpful.
Questions or comments? Helen?
So I just have a comment. I don't have a question. I think, you know, it takes a village to raise a child. It takes more than a ghost to make this happen. And I think we owe a huge debt of gratitude to Susan, who spearheaded this and who made sure that it kept on moving. I mean, the other people, Nira and Jenny and all those people are really important too. I don't want to belittle their importance in any way. But Susan, you made this happen. You knew it had to and you made it happen. And thank you.
I agree, Helen. Thank you. Yeah. Here, here, Susan. Yeah. So Susan, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. So Robin, thank you, Helen. That was very kind. It was, it truly was a team effort. And as Dr. Marini said.
It wasn't kind, it was true.
It was both, but also, you know, and I think the part, this is actually a really good example of a partnership where the town administrator and the superintendent went, are going, kind of doing this together, meeting on a weekly basis together with the commissioner of public health. It's just a really incredible partnership with the town on this. And, and so a lot of credit goes to them. So the motion that we have received from the town administrator's office was sent to you, I think it was last, just a couple, maybe half an hour ago. And it basically says that we would, that we are voting to request a reserve fund transfer of $300,000 for a school testing program as described in the proposal summary, which is the two pager you have, and as indicated on the reserve fund transfer form that the advisory committee has, line two, to the select board contingency, which is essentially the same mechanism we use. The last, the same mechanism we used to do the last set of COVID funds. So this is what Melissa and Mary Ellen have sort of agreed is the right mechanism to do it. So I will, I will move that, that request.
And do I have a second? Andy, thank you. And Barbara, thank you. And are there any other comments or questions before we take a vote? Mary Ellen, I take it you're in on this, so you know what's happening. Thank you, Mary Ellen. We just always want your approval. Or at least, or at least your awareness, even if you don't approve.
If you missed the emails earlier today, they were like frantic emails, like, Mary Ellen, is this wording okay? Can we do this? Yes. And so she, we can't, you know, get off the dime without.
I know, just wanted to let the public know she's in on it. Here we go. Okay, let's take a vote then. Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Susan, who is someone going to the A.C.?
I think the superintendent has appointed me to do that. Dr. Pollak is coming with me to answer questions. It's one of those examples where just, you know, a Brookline mom who is regularly quoted in the New York Times as an expert on testing in the country happens to be the person that's advising us. So we're lucky for that. And the idea is that if this all works out and if it can all sort of happen, that it would start in January and it would run for somewhere between eight and 10 weeks, which gets us through cold and flu season, when all the symptoms are the same, potentially gets us to a vaccine, potentially gets us to additional cares funding with a new administration. So there are, there's a reason that there's sort of a limited time on this because of other things that are happening. But all that is TBD and there's obviously a big communication element to this also that Trisha is working on with, with the superintendent's office.
And Mariah?
You answered about 90% of my questions just now, Susan. I just had one more. So when advisory votes tonight, then it will be essentially official that this will go forward? Okay.
And Mary Ellen, is there a lag on when the funds are available? Once they, I mean, it's not a long lag. Once we, once they vote, that is the vote. There aren't more votes. What they do is they release it to the select boards reserve for this purpose. And, you know, it's my understanding that January, we can start, you know, drawing, or later this month of January, we can start drawing down on it. Mary Ellen, is that close to right?
I believe so, based on what I was kind of reading today is that the town will provide a purchase order, they'll finalize the contracts and then, and then things will start to move from there. So yeah, then I think we're, we, after tonight's vote, school department needs to go into logistics and planning mode. Money is going to follow after that, but it's really the delivery that needs to jumpstart.
Yeah. And I just want to, exactly right. And I just want to sort of put a caveat on this, which is, you know, some of the neighboring towns that we refer to often have tried multiple times to get this going. They have up to two vendors, three vendors, and one of our neighboring peer communities that we think highly of had a failed pilot and they're now on their second and now they're on their third vendor. So I just want to be thoughtful that this is, this is a pilot. This is not a, like, here's the plan in ink. This is something that, you know, Trisha Laham and the nurses and some additional FTEs will need support on and, and just some latitude that, that everything is changing really quickly and, and that we're going to try it a particular way. And then if it doesn't work, we'll try it a different way. There are, almost every single town is doing something a little bit different for their teachers and students. So, so yes, that's, that's right. So the logistics and planning mode is going to be, no kidding, it's going to, it's going to be a lift as well as, you know, the coordination with the teachers and communication with them.
Thank you so much.
Can I just ask one more? So parents can expect to, if the, assuming everything goes ahead, parents can expect to hear something from the district about the bolus testing, once we know more?
Yeah. My guess is that, my guess is that it'll be after break or some chance will be before break. But my guess is it'll take a little while to get that done.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Susan. Thank you for going to the meeting too. And then you'll be gone and come back, I guess, so.
Or I guess I can be on two screens, but yeah.
Okay. Of course, multitask, of course you can.
I just, I just want to add my thanks to Susan as well. Truly, she's, she's clearly being, you know, very humble about the accolades she deserves. Would not have happened without Susan, let's be clear about that. So thank you.
So true. Okay, we're moving on to student report. Claire, you are up. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Claire Galleen, the school committee's student representative. It's great to be back and I'm really excited to share the information I've compiled for this evening. I worked with student council to create a school-wide survey to better understand the experience of high school students as we've shifted into hybrid learning. We got almost 1,200, or yeah, 1,200 responses. And that's six times more than we got last time. Just a heads up, there are a lot of numbers and percentages in this report, but I'll try my best to go through them in an effective way. We've got a lot to cover, so let's dive in. The first question was asking what grade the responder was in. There was a pretty even split between grades. 32% being freshmen, 26% sophomores, 21% juniors, and 26% seniors. The next question was, are you hybrid or remote? 64.4% were hybrid and 35.6% were remote. I asked remote students to rate their experience so far on a scale of one to 10. The average rating was a 6.5. 71.5% of remote students rated their experience so far as a six or higher and 28.6% rated their experience as a five or lower. When I asked how the switch to hybrid had affected their learning, the majority said they were unaffected, but a handful said they feel left out of the class. To measure how the transition to hybrid has been for hybrid students, I asked them how they felt about hybrid before starting. Kids are feeling pretty nervous with the average school, with the average score being a six and 43.7% of students rating five or below. To gauge how the transition had been, I next asked them to rate their experience in hybrid so far. The average score was a 6.6, which definitely shows some improvement. Additionally, if we were looking at the chart, the skew of the data definitely changed with only 24.9% of students rating five or below. And that's 24.9% and the one before was 43.7%. Looking at the data, it's clear that students were pretty nervous to begin hybrid, but have been generally feeling better since they started. Next, I asked hybrid students to rate BHS's safety protocols. The average rating was a seven. 76.3% of hybrid students rated the safety protocols a six or higher. 23.7% of the students rated it a five or lower. I want to pause my data analysis for just a moment to say thank you to all the amazing staff at Brookline High for working so hard to keep us all safe. I appreciate all of you so dearly. Anyways, back to the survey. My next question was for hybrid students. It was, how likely is it that you will switch to remote? 14.2% of students said it was likely they would switch. 41.4% said it was unlikely and 44.5% said they were not sure. The next question is an issue I've personally felt very concerned about. And that is, how well do you think other students have been following COVID guidelines? The average rating was a 5.9, which isn't terrible, but it's also not great. 41.4% of students rated a five or below and 58.4% rated a six or higher. I then asked students, how transparent do they feel the school has been regarding COVID? And the average rating was a 6.6. 29.8% of students rated a five or below and 70.3% rated a six or higher. My next question was asking students how emotionally supported and connected they felt in their academic classes. The average rating was a 6.1 with 37.8% of students rating a five or lower and 62.2% of students rating it a six or higher. I asked students about their opinions on Wednesday's next. I gave them a list of options and to check all that applied to their experience. So 93.4% said that they liked it was a half day. I do too. 66.1% said that they liked Wednesday's remote and only 5.6% said they didn't like it, that it was remote. 31.9% said that they liked that all their classes meet on Wednesday and 27.9% said that they do not like that all their classes meet. 28.6% said that the blocks are too short to be productive and 51.6% said that they liked the short blocks and that their teachers were, used the time well. 46.5% of students said that all their classes, that because all of their classes meet on Wednesday, they have too much homework on Tuesday night. I know that I can definitely relate to that one. Only 17% said that there is no difference between the amount of homework on Tuesday night and the rest of the week. Generally, the experience of both remote and hybrid students has been somewhat positive overall. However, there is one question that, that's answers I found troubling. The question was, how many hours of homework do you have assigned each night? 55% of students reported having three or more hours of homework each night. If that, if that doesn't seem harmful, imagine sitting at your desk for hours while the sun goes down. Maybe not being able to participate in your club or call your friends or go outside. This year, I thought that Brookline was trying to shift their focus to help students with their mental health. Cutting down on homework is an extremely important first step. I know personally, there have been weeks where I hadn't left my house for days because I was so wrapped up in finishing my homework. I know tons of, I know tons of kids, me included, whose sleep schedules have been a wreck this year. I know my report involved a lot of numbers, but I appreciate everyone listening and hopefully better understanding the student experience with remote and hybrid this year. Generally speaking, students are doing pretty well. BHS has done a great job of keeping us safe and has become much more transparent with information about COVID. The averages for almost every question were around six, which means we've all been doing a pretty good job, but there's definitely room for improvement. Again, thank you to the staff and administration at BHS for working so hard to keep us all safe. Additionally, I'd like to thank Jen Martin, Mr. Dubois, Dean Poon, Ms. McGinnis, student council, Headmaster Meyer, and all the students who took this survey for helping me get this information together. I couldn't have done it without you. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. That is a lot of information. Does the superintendent get a copy of some of that? Do you have that?
Yeah, I can, I can share it with him.
Thanks, Claire.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Any comment or question? Okay. Helen?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Shouldn't let it go. Hi, Claire. Thank you for doing that. A couple of things. One, if you have a report like that, you should send it to Robin so she can get it to us in a form that, you know, we can read it so that we can ask questions better. If there are any questions, if you're doing, I mean, you don't have to send us your report ahead of time, but, but if you had it, that, that would have been helpful. The one question I had in terms of the homework, do you think it's more than you had last year? No, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Claire.
That's okay. That happens.
Well, it's a little hard to say because sophomore and junior year workload is pretty different. But I wouldn't say personally, I have, I mean, I would say I have more homework because of my grade. But I also just think that even if there isn't a huge difference in what's being assigned last year and what's being assigned this year, we're in like, we're in just completely different circumstances this year than we were last year. You know, if a kid had a few hours of homework a night last year, at least they got to go to school and see their friends, maybe participate during their club or play sports. But now because a lot of kids are at home all day and so they log onto school for six and a half hours or so and then they have, I don't know, basically no time to relax in between just going back onto their computer and doing homework. And just on top of that, I know that, the, I know that Brookline High School committed this year to focusing on students' mental health and just not have, not seeing that follow through in terms of homework is concerning to me. And I know it's concerning to other students too. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Claire. We really appreciate, I appreciate the thought you put into the report before you come. Thank you for that. That's great. That's great. You're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you may have-
Mariah had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mariah.
Thank you. I just had a quick question, Claire. You said you got six times as many survey responses, right? Like 1,200 versus 200? Was it, were, did you get help distributing the survey through the admin? Okay, so that's, I was just amazed you got that many students through TikTok or whatever, Instagram.
Oh, yeah, no. My first survey, like, back in September, October, was over Instagram, but ever since then, I've been doing it on, like, Google Forums. And so my one before this was just posted on Canvas, but then this one, I reached out to Ms. McGinnis, and she helped me distribute it during advisory.
Oh, great. Okay, thanks.
Susan?
I just want to say thank you as well. I look forward to seeing the data. And I just want you to know that this has been a topic of conversation at Panel Four. And so if it's okay, it may be worth shooting them an email, letting them know that this data is here. Maybe you might be willing to talk to a couple of them or all of them. I think they'd be very interested in hearing how the students are doing, just kind of from a health and wellness point of view.
Yeah, I'm, I'm planning on making like a slideshow video involving like the charts and stuff like that, so I can send that over to them. Because, yeah, okay, cool.
Yeah, you can send, and if you, if you don't have their address, just send it to me, and I'll, I'll send it to them and CC you.
Thanks.
And forward it to us, please.
So, thank you, Claire. We're going to move on. Jim, I'm wondering if we could hold off on your report for just a few minutes while we do public comments, because we had said public comment would be at 6:45. We're not too far behind that. But that way, the public that are here will, will get to them, and then we'll get to you. Would that be okay? Okay. We're going to go to public comment. I should just let the public know that after conversation with several people, including Mary Ellen and Arthur Conquest, the base conversation is being moved to January 7th. That gives us more time to look into the options we have, how we can be helpful to Base. So I just want the public to know. I know we've gotten a lot of emails about it. We believe in the program. We want to help the program. And so we are working to see what is the best way that we can make that happen. And so you should expect an update at the January 7th meeting. That's our next meeting. And Arthur knows that, who is the Chair of the Board for Base. So I just wanted to show that. Okay, our first person, I think Acacia is not here, Landfield. So Kevin McKenzie. We're going to give you two to three minutes each. If David Pearlman can help us with that. And after Kevin will be Leah Lunowitz. So Kevin, are you here?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Hi, members of school committee. My name is Kevin McKenzie, and I am a parent professional at the Lawrence School. I know tonight you will hear from a lot of parent professionals in the district and our supporters on exactly why you should be paying us a diversified wage. Instead, I want to take this approach. Working with middle schoolers, it is not uncommon to feel, well, just about any question you could possibly think of. This is especially true when you spend over six hours a day with them every day for an entire year. And in fact, some of my students have had me for their third consecutive year now. That's a lot of questions. One question some inquiring minds will pose is related to how much I get paid. Not normally. Society says that is rude, but I don't quite mind. My salary is Google-able, after all, and that's how I answer. I tell them in this public record and define it themselves. That's usually enough to kill the question, but one student went the distance, which naturally impressed me. "Mr. Mac," the student said, "I did the math, and based on what the average teacher's assistant in Massachusetts make, I think you make $45,000 a year," the student told me one day. I think my initial response at the time was laughter. Then I reminded the student that I don't work summers, and there are only five, seven-hour days in our work week. "Oh," the student replied. "Thank you for working here." That's where that conversation ended. If I'm lucky, I clear $22,000 from this year, from this job in a year. And that is before I pay the rent to live in the Boston metro area or the other expenses like student loans or healthcare. The same is true for every parent professional in the district. Make no mistake, I love my job. It's why I do it. There's plenty of other jobs out there that will pay me more, and the jobs I'm also qualified for. But I love working at Lawrence, and I love working with my students. But it is hard for me financially to have this job and to get, and as things get tough, I'll have to reevaluate my options. Now, I'm not asking for $45,000 a year, but I am asking for increased parent professional pay so that we can afford to stay in this job, so that we can afford to make ends meet in the middle of a global pandemic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. Leah, you are next, and Elizabeth Stillman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Awesome. Alrighty, hello. Tonight, tonight I am reading a letter on behalf of myself and 356 other educators who have signed in support to the members of the school committee. As COVID infection and transmission rates rise state and nationwide, contact tracing in Brookline schools remains insufficient, access to testing is fraught with obstacles, and workloads only continue to increase. Parent professionals, the lowest-paid group of educators who spend the most time with our highest needs students, need to be compensated for our increased exposure and risk, and increased workloads with an immediate pay raise. We would like to ask everyone sitting on the school committee, every administrator, and everyone at Town Hall, if you would feel safe or even be willing to trade places with a para tomorrow. Would you risk exposing yourself to COVID throughout the day in specialized programs where maintaining social distancing has proved impossible? Would you toilet, risk exposure to bodily fluids, hand-over-hand prompts, and help feed students? Would you put your health and the health of your family on the back burner, all for the benefit of your students? Would you be selfless, fearless, patient, and compassionate every day? Would you serve as a custodian, caregiver, teacher, and nurse in addition to all of this? Would you do any of this for $20 an hour or less? We doubt any one of you would say yes. Well, that's the reality for paras, dramatically increased workloads and COVID exposure risks, paired with a barely livable wage. It is time for the school committee and the district to step up and support the paras who have been the backbone of Brookline's school reopening. You say you respect and rely on paras? Prove it. We are sick and tired of words of affirmation riddled with hypocrisy until they are paired with an action like the increased financial compensation we deserve. Paras who are directly working in close contact with students should receive hazard pay in addition to an increased livable wage for each and every parent professional. We have no adequate financial safety net to fall back on in times of crisis such as a global pandemic, as we've been surviving off the district's monetary scraps. Despite the increasingly demanding and dangerous nature of our job, the only way to continue to support the district's highest needs students is to finally begin supporting their educators with an increased wage. We ask you tonight to imagine a day without paras. By 8:00 AM, a perilous Brookline High would have unaccompanied, high-needs students wandering out of their buses onto busy and dangerous roads like Route 9, risking their lives. In the Driscoll Lab Program, all accommodations and support for social studies, math, and science would be lost among other subject areas as well. By 8:20 AM, the district would be in direct legal violation of each and every IEP district-wide. How can you expect to retain paras or even fill the unfilled para openings with such low wages, especially compared to neighboring districts? Who would come to work and stay working in Brookline when they can make so much more in nearby districts? The solutions to Brookline's longstanding para retention problem and current understaffing problem are simple. Pay parent professionals like the educators that we are. Sincerely, myself and 356 other educators, 102 paras, the remainder supporting teachers and admin, for which we are so grateful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leah. Elizabeth, you are next, and then Phil Cox.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Oh, man. Hi, my name is Liz Stillman. I'm here representing the Brookline Commission for Women on the Proposed Policy Against Discrimination, Harassment, Sexual Harassment, and Retaliation. And before you vote on this proposed policy, I'm here to ask the school committee to include some clear policy guidance on the record-keeping of complaints. While the proposed policy does include an annual reporting to this committee of all the complaints from the superintendent's office, there seems to be no clarity on what is reported, in what format it is reported, and how complaints are documented, whether they are substantiated Title IX claims or not. Recently, when asked by the Policy Review Subcommittee, the school district stated that there were five substantiated complaints that fell under Title IX in the past five years. However, the records of complaints that were deemed unsubstantiated, and more importantly, the number of those complaints and how they were dealt with, were not available. Those records evidently live in a paper form and are stored in a building that is currently inaccessible. The problem is that five complaints in five years seems like a very low number. According to an article in The Sagamore, as well as at a meeting with the Commission for Women, students in an organization called Sharp Warriors, that has been working with the school administration at the high school, and Sharp stands for Sexual Harassment and Assault Response Prevention, collected over the summer in a Google document approximately 75 stories that attested to the culture of sexual harassment in the Brookline public schools, not just the high school. And while many of them may not have risen to the level of a substantiated Title IX complaint, there seems to be no record of them, or how they were determined as non-substantiated, or even how they were handled to the degree that they were even reported to the school. There needs to be more transparency in how these issues are handled, because the new regulations, which hopefully will be rolled back in January with the new administration, require procedures that are even more chilling to potential complainants. But what we are asking for in the Commission for Women is that there be more transparency and accessibility in record-keeping, as well as documentation of how a matter is deemed substantiated or not. How is this decision made? And how are we documenting exactly how that decision is made and why? Seems like it would be a very important piece of information for the school system to have. We also have no way of knowing what happens as the result of a complaint. So what we are asking for very specifically is that there is policy guidance. Before you vote on this policy, that there is guidance on record-keeping, that it be done in an electronic format, that we document how we substantiate or not substantiate complaints, and how they are dealt with, and to make those records accessible to the school system themselves. That would be particularly helpful. Remember, a school culture free of harassment is also a question of public health. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Phil, you're up next, and then Jessica Wendershubeau.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Great, thank you. I'm Philip Cox, the parent of a first and third grader at Baker. First, I wanted to thank everyone on the frontline of this pandemic. Our teachers and other frontline workers are truly doing a remarkable job, and I want to thank all of you for doing your best in this challenging time. I have some concerns I wanted to share about the educational content our first graders are receiving, primarily because of the scenario we're in right now. I think most folks would agree that they are in the most critical years of their foundational learning. They're caught between kindergarten, who are live full-time in school, and older students like third graders, who are more independent and capable of learning in a remote environment. To date, our first graders have had somewhere around 10 to 12 live days at school, and the rest of the time, trying to learn at home in a remote environment, which, quite frankly, in my opinion, is not working. We have three and a half more days planned in the next 30 days to be live in school, and that's leaving them to learn on their own the rest of the time. And unfortunately, we've seen almost every example of less school happening and, and no more. Examples would be today, like a snow day, which I obviously get, and we can't change. But I was disappointed to hear that we made it a half-day, you know, in, in my opinion, for no reason. Professional development days continue to fall on, on live student days, parent-teacher meeting half-days, teacher meetings, planned holidays. All of these have further reduced the learning time that children are receiving. Despite everyone's best efforts, if this year continues like it's going for our first graders, I don't think we can declare this year a success for our children. We aren't setting them up for success heading into the next year. And I would propose that we have urgent change, and it's going to take everyone's support to make that happen. That examples could include, and these are just some ideas, I'm sure many of you have better ideas, but flexibility in scheduling. A snow day like today should take the place of next Wednesday's remote day, as one example. Professional development days should never take place on an in-school day. They should shift to Wednesday only. Parent-teacher meetings on Wednesdays or potentially in the evenings. We should cancel or postpone both of our spring breaks, extend the school year. And like I said, I'm sure there are many other good solutions. I know this is going to mean asking different groups to be flexible, but we have to consider this for the best of our children. Like I started with, first graders in particular are just in foundational learning leaders. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Phil. Jess, you're up, and then Lindsay Linton.
Hi, can you hear me yet?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, Suzanne. First of all, just let me acknowledge and thank you all for the hard work on the testing. I look forward to hearing more about it. We've got a petition with 1,150-plus signatures and growing. But, but really, what I'd like to focus on this evening is the role of parent professionals that you are hearing more about. They are keeping our classrooms live and open, our schools open. They are facing expectations, you know, every day, day in and day out, that they be flexible, to use that term, during the pandemic and do whatever they're asked to do on the job. They know that students they work with have the hardest time with masks and learning when social distancing, as you heard. They're required to report to that call, all hands on deck, expected to accept without protest, on the job, anyway, that they are among those whose circumstances expose what are the deepest and unjust inequities in our society at large that are becoming clear during this pandemic. And that includes here, here in Brookline. Proportionally speaking, as I think some know, paras are more apt to be black or brown than other educators in the district, more apt to need to use public transportation across municipalities, more limited in the housing they can afford because of their pay, therefore more apt to be living in neighborhoods with high community spread, and in part because young people are living in households as well, with many roommates whose lives are not known for social distancing, sometimes by necessity. And the data shows they are at more risk. I respect the fact they're demanding better compensation and along with the testing you've, you've already addressed. The entire BEU membership and many progressive residents of Brookline are standing with them. You know, they're really the educators who answer the call or, or of an administrator or a teacher to report to a room unexpectedly, to fill an unscheduled gap in coverage, to jump forward to clean up a mess, to be there when an unassigned educator is unable to come. Those of us who teach know how irregular school days can be in the best of times, and how unpredictable, and increasingly, they are instances of unexpected need due to quarantines and illnesses and the childcare emergencies. So at the same time, parent professionals are often the closest relationship a child with special needs has. These educators are juggling the emotional toll on children that unpredictable pandemic schooling causes in the buildings. You must realize, not just in remote learning. So a day without a para, a school that cannot hire, retain them, is a place that can rival any remote conditions as a threat to the mental health of our youth and our little ones. So I asked the school committee to listen to their voices and heed this call for compensation right away as we head into this next phase. Thanks so much for your time.
Thanks, Jess. And Lindsay, you're our last speaker. Robyn, is she there?
She's there with her Zoom connection. I can only promote her to panelists to allow her to speak. So I just, let's see, I'll try it one more time. I'm just wondering if, I'm not sure whether she's, if, Lindsay, if you're there, if you want your camera off, then if you want to turn that off now.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Linton, and I am a parent professional at BHS in the Bridge Alliance Program. I am also a single parent of a first grader, a third grader, fourth grader, and a sixth grader at RLA and FRR. I'm coming to speak to say that, as a parent professional, we are definitely underpaid. We do do a lot, and I'm going to use a scenario as- We do do a lot, and I'm going to use the scenario as our educators, our teachers who are here are like physical therapists and our paraprofes-
I can't hear anymore. Can anyone else?
No. Lindsay, we lost your voice, your audio.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, now we can hear you.
Sorry about that, just bad connection around here. We do do a lot, and the fact that we would love for a greater pay rate is something that should be done. In a typical day, it's very hard for us to be able to do normal things and not feel like we are going above and beyond and not getting compensated for what we do. We sit, there are days where I have to, where my students who are of high risk, who I have to now chase down the hallway because they are having a behavior, or I have to be with them in the bathroom because they need assistance. There's no social distancing within our students. And so the fact that we are putting ourselves out there, and as Leah said, coming back home and now putting our families at risk, why is it that we are not getting paid more? Why is it that my pay for a month is pretty much my rent and all the bills that I have to do? So it's very hard for us to continue to want, and don't get us wrong, we love our job. Because if we didn't, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be there for those kids. We wouldn't be putting our life on the line, and all we're asking is just for a little bit more. We have surrounding towns who get paid more than us. I have a mother who asked me, she's like, you work with these students, you know, how much do you get paid? And then when I tell her, and I'll be honest with you, I get paid twenty dollars an hour with a dollar extra if I do something with a sub, or if I work individually with a student. As an individual, that is very hard to live by in a time like this. And even without a pandemic, that is very hard to live by. Some of us have to go out and get a second job or do something extra just to make it by, just to make it, just to pay bills, just to put food on the table, just to close our children's back. So all we're asking is those who are on the school committee, help us out. If there was a day that you had to be in our shoes, I guarantee you, most of you would turn your backs and walk the other way, because it is not an easy position. And I know that maybe, and maybe some of you have been in our position, and so you know. So all we're just asking is for you guys to just help us out. Help us and raise our pay. Help us and make us feel like we are wanted. Help us and make us feel like you need us. Because I guarantee you, if there was a day without paraprofessionals, it would be very, very difficult for most educators to be able to run their classroom, to run anything at all, whether it be from elementary school, whether it be the middle school students, whether it be the high school students, and even those above and beyond. It is very difficult, but you know what? We do it because we love our job. We love these students, and we know that these students need that education. Because without us, without educators, there would be no school. They would be at home, and parents would be driving themselves craving having to homeschool students twenty-four seven. So please, we're asking, we're not, we don't want to beg, because we shouldn't have to beg. But we're asking for that help, that hand, and just saying, you know what? Let's give them more. Let's start them off higher. So that way, maybe Brookline will be more staffed with more paraprofessionals from different places. Maybe there wouldn't be a difficulty having staff if the pay was worth it. And I guarantee you, that is why a lot of people do not be staffed at Brookline, because the pay is not what they want. But I thank you for your time, and I pray that everybody stays safe and healthy during these times.
Thank you, Lindsay. Appreciate it. Lindsay's our last speaker for public comment. So we can go back, Jim, to our superintendent's report. I'm noticing that the Driscoll team is here, and I don't think we're going to get to Driscoll for a while yet. Are we doing the hybrid review next, after your comments, aren't we, Jim?
Yes, yes, we are. If you would prefer to go to the comments, I mean, to the review first, that would be fine.
No, no, that's not, I'm just thinking maybe we should tell the Driscoll team they're welcome to stay, of course, but they may not, they may want to come back in forty-five minutes.
Oh, I misunderstood what you were saying. I thought you were talking about the hybrid presentation.
I'm thinking you're up next. Then we have Michelle for hybrid. And so we're not going, it's going to be at least forty-five minutes before we get to Driscoll. So I just, I just didn't want the Driscoll people to have to be hanging in there if they don't want to. They're welcome to come back.
Yeah.
So I'm just putting it out there. It's up to them. They're welcome to stay, but they're welcome to come back closer to, I would say, eight, anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so you're up, Jim, for your report.
Okay, okay. My report's very brief. It's not long at all. This continues to be a very challenging, difficult year, as we've heard from a whole bunch of different people. And one of the things I wanted to circle back to, that there was some discussion about it two meetings ago, I believe, and that has to do with returning first and second grade students to the schools full-time. With some assistance from Erin, looking at the numbers and working with the principals, that I will not be recommending the return of first and second grade students full-time right now. And the reason for that, really, are two or three for one is the rise in the pandemic and COVID is going into the winter months is causing concern, not just here, but everywhere. It's not, in my view, the time to be adding more students to the school. We will need to maintain the six-foot distance. We will maintain the six-foot distance in order to provide the mitigation that's been recommended, and we will do that. Providing the six-foot distance creates space issues in most of the buildings. That meaning that in order to bring the first and second grade in, we would have to have more classrooms. We don't have enough classrooms in all of the buildings. And in many cases, that would require adding some additional staff as well if we had to keep that six-foot distance. So I will not be recommending that for now. And we'll be monitoring it as we get to the spring, with the vaccine hopefully taking hold, and maybe a change in the metrics. We certainly can go back and visit at that time, but not now. Also, you know, today we had a snow day. And thank goodness for Erin Gallantin and DPW, they do a great job. However, the volume of snow has made it impossible for them to clear the parking lots. And we will not be able to use the buildings tomorrow. And this complicates things. I've been on the phone, you know, seems like half my life today to try to deal with what's going to make the greatest amount of sense, because we pivot to a Wednesday. And pivoting to the Wednesday works because the schedule at the K-8 schools, everybody, the whole district is remote on Wednesday. So just pivot to Wednesday where everybody is scheduled to be remote works. However, we had, this week, we had Wednesday, and we had Thursday today, which was Wednesday, second Wednesday. And tomorrow, we're not going to be able to use the buildings. The teaching materials are in the schools, and they have students being in front of a computer screen with the materials in the schools, making it very difficult to maintain the quality of instruction. So I'm looking at, and this is probably the worst decision anybody has, any superintendent has to make, because we want to do the right things for kids. But I don't want kids sitting in front of a computer and having to do work that is not instructional work. It's not going to take them forward. Therefore, I'm going to have to be making a decision, which I'm going to be announcing as soon as we finish this meeting. I may step away from this meeting to announce. I'm doing a little more study on it. But in our likelihood, we're not going to be able to have school tomorrow. And that is, in some ways unfortunate, and in other ways, we make up the date if that happens. But three Wednesdays in a row are going to require us to go back and relook at our schedules so that if we end up in this kind of a situation that we can actually run, we can't run a Friday schedule tomorrow, because a Friday schedule doesn't work. The remote schedules and the in-person schedules don't mesh. And since they don't mesh, then people are, the schedules won't work. And if everybody goes remote, they won't work. It requires half of them to be in school. So so there I have it, and I'm going to be publishing something very shortly. And that's the superintendent's update.
Oh, we got lots of hands up.
Well, I bet, yeah.
Mariah, then Jennifer, then Helen. Go ahead, Mariah.
Um, thank you, Jim. I had a couple thoughts about this for tomorrow. One is, I don't even know what day we are anymore. Today's Thursday. So last, yeah, Wednesday night, when we were going to, today being a half-school day, originally I had thought that was a great plan. But then last night, when it was announced, I felt like, I felt like people need a little bit of a break, sort of to what Claire was saying earlier this year about mental health and people needing to have a break. I kind of regretted the half-day decision last night and this morning, when I was trying to get my kids to participate. And so I think that, you know, whatever we're dealing with this week is, you know, we're figuring this out. But maybe going forward, that's something to think about, about, you know, sort of the the trade-off that we're making here in allowing people to have a little bit of a pressure release valve on these snow days. You know, they're luck of the draw, but we do have them, and it's something to think about, that pleasure of that. And then the other, but the one thing I thought was, I don't know, I don't want to say interesting, but the idea that we don't have our materials prepared to do the pivot is, I guess, what I'm a little surprised by, because that's what this whole year, sort of, I thought this whole year was about needing to pivot on a dime. And so if this is sort of our wake-up call, even with a week of knowing that, or not a week, but maybe we'll say a couple of days, knowing that a big snowstorm was coming, and we weren't necessarily ready for multiple days at home, then that's just something that I'm sure you're thinking about, right, how we can be ready, because we might need to, again, it comes down to a class or a whatever needs to close or shut down, and making sure that the kids can do that and have what they need to do that. So those are my two comments. I think it's, I'm on board with tomorrow being a snow day too, so whatever you decide. The other thing is, the high school, though, they ran a normal Thursday today, an abbreviated Thursday.
High school.
They do their own thing.
Oh, my God, yeah. And they're one building, don't forget.
Yes, right. No, I'm just saying, though, that they don't have, they weren't running a sequential Wednesday. They did run their Thursday.
Certainly were not. And that really did, that really did work. The high school's a place that they can't use, the building in particular, because there's snow. But thank you for your comments, Mariah, that
Thank you.
I actually find your comments heartening there, because it helps me with my, I need Pepto-Bismol after this thing, sorry.
Jennifer, you're next.
Well, I think Mariah may have said some of what I was going to say in a perhaps more eloquent fashion. I was feeling today like a loss of a rite of passage of childhood. And I think if you're going to live in the Northeast, one of the benefits is you get a snow day. And I think it was hard for kids not to have a snow day and to go to school. So, you know, the educator in me is like, you know, and I personally taught, you know, we taught remote today, and we pivoted to remote, and it worked, and we had great attendance, but I just know, I don't know. So I put that out there to throw this, sort of the spaghetti on the wall, is just my own comments. I do think that, I think Mariah phrased it as release valve and mental health and social emotional learning, and that's all awesome stuff that I put my little gold stars next to as well. But I do think that there's just something about a snow day, and kids really look forward to it and need it, and I actually think that invigorates them in some ways. So anyways, I wanted to, I understand as a superintendent, it's not a job I ever want, that it's really tough to make the call. But it is quite a storm out there. It's still, the roads are not great. So it's really just not safe for people, I think, to be traveling. So you know, whatever it is that you decide to do, Dr. Marini, I just add my comments because
Well, I love your comments. Did you read The Globe this morning? Anybody read The Globe this morning? Where The Globe had a little article about superintendent, you're like the Grinch. Give the kids a snow day. Oh, my word, unbelievable. I hear what you're saying, you know, sometimes the road to hell is paved with contention snow.
Helen has a thought.
You're damned if you do and damned if you don't. You know that. It doesn't matter. There'll be those who say you are absolutely wrong. We don't have enough days, and this is wrong. And there'll be those who say you don't have, you know, I want my child to have their childhood, and the snow day is part of a rite of passage. My question was, so are you talking just pre-K two eight, or are you talking everybody, high school too? So the high school also?
Yeah.
Okay. Because the high school could do remote.
But, you know, we have to make up days, Helen, and so we have different, we have shared staff. We're just gonna, if we take a snow day, everybody's going to take a snow day.
Okay. Thank you.
My barometer is my friend Clea Galian over here. I saw her bursting and smiling and Yeah.
Yeah. She's all for a snow day. Oh, Claire? Whoops, she just went up mute.
Oh, oops, wait, can I say something real quick? Okay, I, you know, snaps to what Mariah, Jennifer, and Helen said. But, and I can also like totally understand, like, the parent perspective in all of this. And I just wanted to add on another point, on top of like the rite of passage of having snow days, and like thinking about poor little kids not getting to have snow days, but also just like, in terms of like equitability, having like remote school on snow days can be really tricky for a lot of students. If their whole family is home now, and they're all working online, and they already don't have great Wi-Fi, they can't fully participate in class with like heavy snow landing on power lines. Their power goes out, and they don't have a generator. They can't go to school. And so I just think that's another, that's something that we discussed a lot in legislature. But I think that's another thing that's important to keep in mind when thinking about snow days, because they're not only just fun, even though they are lots of fun.
Yeah, yeah. That was good comments too, but let's not walk away from tonight and everybody that's listening, thinking that we've abandoned the possible remote, switching to remote. But we do have to do a team back and figure some things out. But thank you very, very much for your comments. They are more helpful than you have any idea. And when Michelle and your group is presenting, don't take it personally, but I'm going to step away from the camera, because I have to record a message. And I want to clear my throat and record it with all the confidence I can muster. So I'm going to need a few seconds to do that. Okay, and thank you for your comments. I have to say, very, very, very good, and I'm sure they're reflective of the community as well. And, you know, let me just say this, and then I know it's a long meeting, so I won't delay it if I can possibly help it. But you're right, Helen. It's, no matter what decision you make, someone's going to agree, someone's not going to agree. So in those situations, what I try desperately to do is I talk with a whole bunch of people, try to get some different perspectives, and then I commune with myself, and I say, "Look, you're not going to please everybody, so that's fine. Get that out of your mind. I don't care about pleasing everybody." All right, I can say that. I, of course, want to, you know, make people happy, but, you know, if that's not a consideration, what is the right thing to do? What should I do here that's the right thing to do for the system? So I'm going in, "No, you know, if we stay remote, the students are going to be continuing to be engaged. They're going to be talking with their teachers. That's going to be a good thing to do." And then I'm hearing, "But all of my materials are in school. This would be the third day in a row that I would be doing this, and now I'm going to be having students in front of me. I don't have much to do with them, for them. And so they can do makeup work, they can do their homework, they can do asynchronous work, but the reality is it won't be a very productive day for them." So struggling back and forth on that is how I'm trying to make this decision, and I clearly feel like the decision is made. I just, you know, I don't want to let the cat out of the bag to like get it on that blackboard, or whatever they call it, which I will do, but, so I'm just revealing some- or whatever they call it, which I will do. But uh, so I'm just revealing some of my struggles. You know John Ritchie? You guys remember John Ritchie? John Ritchie was your high school principal for a while. He was your English teacher here for a long time. He's brilliant. He's wonderful, wonderful. He actually writes jingles for commercials, if you can believe it now in his retirement. But uh, he wrote an article for the Boston Globe. And he talked, when he was superintendent, making the decision on a snow day. And I mean, cause my own wife would say, come on, make the decision. What is so difficult about it? Four o'clock in the morning, you're pacing up and down. What do you do? What do you do? What do you do? John Ritchie wrote an article that captured it all. And then here I am at the last minute uh, had facing the DPW says you can't go to school tomorrow. All right, that's my, that's my uh, whining and complaining. Cause I, thank you for bearing with me and.
And you have to get every, all the school committee members, John Ritchie's uh, piece, cause it was really quite good. I read it way back when.
Okay. All right. Sorry, Suzanne.
Thank you, Jim. Good luck with your decision. We're behind you, whatever. Michelle, are you ready to take on the uh, the next part about the hybrid model update?
I am, and there are two teachers who I see, who I'm hoping will turn their cameras on and join us. Shannon and Emily, I think I saw. Yes, hi, guys. Okay, so I'm gonna do a quick introduction and then I'm gonna pass it on to the teachers because the work they're doing is really exciting and I want um, you to be able to speak more with them than listen to me. So I'm gonna share a screen quickly and do a quick um, intro to what we're doing. And then I'm gonna pass it on to them. And um, okay, so uh, you should be able to see that. And so, um, tonight, we're gonna do an update on the hybrid model. And I have some teachers here to share with you. I spoke with many teachers in preparation for this and just a couple of people couldn't be with us tonight. And so I'm gonna share some information from them. They're gonna talk specifically about two models that are being used. One school, Lawrence, is using, has um, students zooming into the classrooms on a regular basis, even when they're in the remote setting. And Runkel has the more traditional hybrid where students are working at home and um, there are students in school. And they're both gonna describe how they work with their classrooms to meet students' needs and to, to provide ongoing instruction on all five days of the week. I just wanna um, highlight a few things in speaking with the teachers. There are a lot of celebrations going on with the hybrid, the use of the LMS system, the collaboration that teachers have been able to have, the community that they've been able to build with their students. Um, and, and the help of other uh, specialists and, and staff in the school to support them. The um, they have, but every teacher I spoke with did identify similar challenges and those are not surprising to me, uh, the time that's needed to plan. It's an enormous lift to have made a shift in general in your instructional practice this way. And so have the, the time that it takes to plan and to prep materials, and I'm gonna share materials from one teacher, um, i- is a high, is high. And the other thing is, is depending on the size of the team, sometimes the lift is bigger because they may only have two teachers instead of three or four. And then um, I think that those are some of the things that we talk specifically. And some of the logistics are difficult, like, like having the logistics even of the shift of today. And I, I'm hoping that they'll share some of their celebrations and challenges with you as well as we go through uh, tonight's presentation. So the next thing I just wanna do is quickly just show you. So Ason, who was not able to be here tonight, shared some pictures of classrooms over at Heath, but they look similar to classrooms. Just so you can see what the physical classrooms currently look like in the hybrid model. So just wanted to give you a moment to take a look at this. Um, and just some of the specific rooms. And I know that the teachers tonight, one of them definitely has some pictures of their classroom in here. So I just wanted you to have the opportunity to see, and also the opportunity to see how, for instance, students are social distance in line, students are socially distanced in the, the gym. And so just wanted to give you that opportunity. And then um, again, here's an art classroom down here. So these, again, are pictures from Heath, but look very much like the other schools. And then I wanted to share, we did not have a middle school teacher who was able to be here with us tonight. But one of the things in, that we were talking about that takes so much time for teachers in preparation is to give students strong instructional uh, ex- experiences that are similar to ones that they were doing when they're live full time. And I'm gonna just show you quickly, this is a historical fiction writing notebook that a sixth grade teacher put together. And I'm gonna, I will send this to school committee members later that they can look at it. But what you can see is that the teacher has gone through and created all of the opportunities that a student would have with a paper and pencil and yet put it into um, a technical background. And therefore, the student has access to their writing checklists, narrative goals, everything that would appear in person, they have the opportunity to also now access. And this takes a tremendous amount of time for them to do, but gives the students a tremendous amount of uh, strong instructional experiences. So I will be sharing the middle school materials with you later. I don't wanna take away from the teachers who are presenting, so um, but I did want you to know that this was there and, and uh, and let you know that it's worth going through and checking out the experiences. And then this Netflix piece is another way that the teacher has incorporated work in their classroom through the right readers, readers workshop. And I'll send you that as well, cause it's a really interesting um, experience that students have had in, as a way to share their reading. So I am gonna pass this on. We have Emily and um, Shannon here tonight. And I'm gonna have them share, so I'm gonna stop sharing. And they're gonna go through and I'm hoping that between the two of them, that we can do questions maybe after both of them present. So I'm gonna pass it on. Emily, I think you were first.
Great. And, and I'm gonna share my screen so that you can see um, what our remote day slides look like, uh, that we sent to students. So uh, like Michelle said, I think our greatest challenge is time. At Runkel, we're a smaller t, a smaller school in general. So typically, we have three third grade teachers. And one of our third grade teachers went to RLA. So Jocelyn Wong and I are the only two third grade teachers. And we work um, in sync and we teach in steps. So that means that what she's teaching on one day, I'm teaching the same day. Um, so that allows us to share materials as we create them. But um, her words were mentally exhausting. It's mentally exhausting. Um, so this is what a student would be looking at on their home day. This is cohort B for Tuesday. Um, it um, lists their schedule, then it has hyperlinks in to any of um, the Zoom links that they would need. So it's a kind of a one stop um, location on their schedule. They can always come back to this home base. And it's free, this page is linked like throughout the slide um, for them to come back to. And then as they move through, we have what to do if you get stuck. Um, we communicated with parents early on in the year that our primary goal is for our third graders to be independent. And we really practiced that in the first um, weeks that we were home full remote. Or what do you do if something's not working? What are your options? And the slide kind of reviews that. As they work through, we've embedded timers, we've embedded checklists. Um, when they click on any of these links here, we've then taken any material that we've been given from curriculum coordinators and added audio files. Cause we have a good number of third graders who can't read the content that are on the slides. Um, on even direction slides that tend to be more dense in content. We've then added an audio clip, so they're listening to any of the directions. And that just takes a lot of time. Um, one of the ways that we're checking that students are actually doing the assignments is they are very savvy with taking photos of their work. Um, so anytime that there's an activity that they're doing on paper, they then take a photograph, upload it, um, and they then submit their slides to us daily. We're using the Rubrik feature in Google Classroom so that we're scoring whether or not it's complete, something's missing, or it's incomplete. Um, and that way we're able to track if there's any issues that come up. We're using videos to teach cursive. Um, we're using um, different links, like throughout, this is just an example of what they would see. And then at the end of the day, they do an exit ticket, which is often like their high of the day, their low of the day, and something they want their teacher to know. Um, some other things that Michelle mentioned that were our real successes are on any of the days that our students are remote. Um, so this is cohort B. So Monday and Tuesday, our math specialist is teaching live math with cohort B. Um, doing an actual math lesson with them at ten forty-five. They then have their special on most of the days, just the way our schedule worked out. They also have Spanish. Um, and then on our Wednesday, when we're remote, where you um, students are doing a design thinking project every week with our uh, CST Debbie Mercer. And um, so they're online and kind of have checkpoints. So when you look back at like their master schedule, they're kind of working on something on their own. And then um, before they get to their lunch and recess, they're on with another teacher. So that would be math in the morning. And they're working on their own again. Um, and then they have like a special or something in the afternoon. So not only do they have touchpoints with us, but they have actual instruction as well as blocks that they're working on, on their own. Um, we've gotten a lot of feedback from parents that this, this is working and their child, most of our third graders are working independently. So without them, so that was our goal. Um, but again, just like the, the time in creating these each week um, is a lot. You want me to hand it over to Shannon?
Let's hand that over to Shannon and then the questions from the school committee. Thank you. And I just have to tell you how much I enjoyed speaking with all the teachers about um, the work that they're doing because it was just, it was like, I get to cover classes sometimes and I was like, oh, I wanna go and do this with students. So. Shannon, I'm gonna pass it over to you.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Michelle. Thank you, Emily. Um, it was really interesting to hear about all the things you're sharing that your school is doing too. Um, I think it's really great to hear about like what's going well on all the different models and the different things that teachers are doing because we can all also learn from each other and kind of take the bits and pieces and bring it into our own. Um, thank you for the opportunity tonight to share just what's going on at Lawrence School in fifth grade. Um, here are pictures of three of the four fifth grade classrooms. They all look a little different. My classroom's on the right. I switched over to tables a few years ago, which was interesting at the beginning of this year, thinking about how do we have the space. Um, but we're still able to have the distance in the classroom. Something that's been really successful at Lawrence is team planning. Um, similar to what Emily shared, I feel like in order to tackle the hybrid learning this year, it's been really helpful to go through all of the curriculum together. And we're taking kind of a divide and conquer approach. And what we want to make sure that we do is we have the assignments accessible, any links that we need and any notes um, to help each other know what to teach. So here's just an example of how we're going about planning. We think about how many days in the week that we need, how many days we have. We have all the links, whatever we need, and then just notes to the teacher. We've used a lot of what we've created from past years and from last spring. We learned a lot last spring teaching remotely. We're also using district-created resources, which have been so helpful. And we're also structuring, delivering lessons and activities in a way that we hope we can continue to use them in the future. We're trying not to look at this as like, oh, my gosh, this is what we need for this year. If the temporary solution, what we create, we're thinking like we could also use this in future years, no matter what the school setting would be. So a typical day inside the, this is what's working well for us right now. And it's definitely changed since the beginning of the year. What I do is I have morning meeting on Zoom for everyone, even for the in-person kids. It's been really helpful having us in the same place, even though we're in different physical locations. Typically, our reading, writing and math instruction happens together. Science and social studies is sometimes together, but oftentimes I'll be one subject fully in person for the week and the other subject fully remote and kind of switch back and forth depending on the activities. In general, the team has been really intentional about what we want to be synchronous and asynchronous, no matter what the subject is. And whenever we feel like there's something that is much better off in person, we make sure that happens for both groups of kids. Every morning on Google Classroom is a morning message. This would typically be like on a whiteboard, greeting the kids outside of the classroom. So now we've just turned it digital. It helps kids know what they need to bring to school. It gives them access to any Zoom link that they might need. And then we're using something on Google called a Jam Board, which is a place where all the kids can kind of answer a question of the day. When both groups are learning together, which we try to do as often as possible, there is a lot of technology that we need to make sure that this happens. Um, in my classroom, there's a classroom desktop, which we use to project whatever the lesson is onto the whiteboard for the in-person kids. But it's also connected to Zoom to share the screen with the kids who are at home. Um, the teacher laptop is what I'll use to have the check-ins, either one-on-one or small group with the remote cohort. I also have an iPad on a tripod stand just to get like a good view, so they can see the teaching as if they would see me in the classroom. And then depending on what's going on, sometimes I'll have like the Bluetooth headphones in and I can hear the cohort that's at home. Or we'll connect the classroom desktop to the audio. And then the cohort who's at home, their voices will come through the ceiling. And they'll be able to hear kids in the class through the desktop too, if we share the audio. So that's really been interesting. Like the kids know it as like, oh, are our voices in the ceiling right now? Can they hear us? And they get really excited every time that they know that there is that connection. We're making a lot of use of Zoom breakout rooms. Um, when a student is in a breakout room by themselves, we call them VIP rooms. Um, it's a place where they can do independent work. It allows them for a quiet workspace where they're focused. It's also been so great for teacher check-ins and conferences, one-on-one, especially in the year where we do need to have that physical distance. Um, just having a reading conference or talking to a student about their writing over Zoom has been fantastic. So that's been a really great way to maintain the connection with the kids who are at home on their remote days. We've also used the Zoom breakout rooms for small groups. And this has helped for cross-cohort interaction and also within cohort collaborative work. Um, a lot of times when we're playing, let's say, a math game in the classroom and there's a digital version, we'll pair someone in cohort A with someone in cohort, cohort B, so that they can be together. Um, we also use the breakout rooms for community building and sharing activities too. Google Classroom has been a fantastic platform. Um, my team had already been on this last year and in previous years, so it felt like a pretty natural transition. What we tried to do was recreate our binder system on Google Classroom. And so it's organized by subject and by the different types of materials. And there's also room for specials. When we're assigning classwork, um, there are a lot of great options for us. Sometimes we can have just students see a file, which is great for when they need to review a lesson. Or if a student misses a lesson one day because they had to be out, they can see what I've taught. Um, for the option, students can edit a file. That's for like whole class collaboration and to make a copy for each student. We do that pretty much every day. It's the daily classwork. And homework, this is a huge difference between the high school model that we just heard about. We decided at Lawrence for grade three through five, for the most part, that we weren't going to have homework that much this year. Kids are already doing so much work at home. Um, and they need time to step away from the computer and kind of do their own thing. So our homework right now is reading every day and continuing and finishing in class assignments as needed, which in fifth grade, it happens a decent amount of time. And then if there's a specific homework assignment that's needed, we'll give that to them. We also have pretty much an open door, open meeting policy. Um, where at Lawrence, like our classroom doors are open, but of course, it's hard for people and other staff members to come in, given the nature of this year and the capacity for the classrooms. Um, so what we've kind of shifted towards is having like an open Zoom meeting. So the vice principal will come by for our readers workshop. Our guidance counselor zooms in to do guidance lessons. Um, our coaches and specialists, depending on what their role is, they might come into the classroom, they might hop on to the Zoom meeting. Um, and I know that this has been really helpful for special education teachers and paraprofessionals as well. So even though we have to be in like these little pods, kind of on our own, we're still able to have interaction with many of the staff members at our school, which the kids really appreciate. We've been able to, at Lawrence, have some cross-class collaboration and interactions too. So the beauty of Zoom is even though we can't get all the classes together in one classroom, we can have the fifth graders all join the same Zoom meeting. And sometimes it happens for classroom subjects or for Spanish. It gives us the opportunity to co-teach a subject. It helps us support a colleague who might have to be out sick one day. Um, and it helps the kids have connections to one another when they're not allowed to be together during recess or lunch, which are the most social and like highly anticipated um, periods of the day. And then lastly, for family connection and communication, I have tried my best to have transparent communication with families about what's going on in the classroom and also in the district. Every week I send a weekly email um, that kind of covers what did we do in class? What are we looking ahead to? Here's something you can check in with your child about. And we have an upcoming virtual class celebration that's coordinated with and supported by room parents. And it will be an opportunity for everyone to come together. So thank you so much for the opportunity to share what's working for, well, for Lawrence School's fifth grade. I just ask that we keep in mind that, just like Emily said and Michelle has shared, we are putting in a significant amount of time and effort to facilitate hybrid learning effectively. It's really, really hard. Um, and it does. And it does feel successful for us when we're able to kind of have control over how we're delivering our instructions. We're all different teachers. We're all different people. We all have different styles and what might work well for my colleague across the hall, it might play out differently for me. So it's really helpful when we're able to make those decisions. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Okay, Michelle, are we ready for questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm sure we've got them. Barbara, go right ahead.
This is not a question. It's just a comment. As I sit and listen to this, I realize how much more we are asking of these teachers than we have ever asked before. I'm thinking back to when I was teaching, which was not terribly different from what they were doing the year before last, shall we say, or the beginning of last, of beginning of last year. You know, you would plan your lessons. You would go in the class and you would teach them. Now, these teachers still have to plan their lessons. They have to be in their class. They have to teach. But it all is now, it all has to be now laid out in a format that can be accessed by the the kids who are who are doing these lessons remotely. And as well as the ones in school who also are working on these. And I look at this and I think about the amount of work, the increase in the amount of work that has to, that has to be done over what had to be done when I was teaching, which was, I thought, a pretty big amount of work. I mean, you are doing the planning, but here you have to have the planning done and then you have to lay it all out so that the kids are able to access what you want them to do when you're not there. And of course, I think we all knew this, but this presentation really, I think, showed it in a way that makes us realize that we are very lucky to have the teachers we are having who are as skillful as they are because this is not an easy job. Plus, they are also, you are also, you teachers are also dealing with kids who have very different issues than when I was teaching because they're in a much more remote environment. And they're not really interacting with you as a teacher on a personal level in with the same intensity, I think, or it's a different kind of intensity that I was interacting with kids. And I look at this and the only thing I can say is we're very lucky to have all of you. I think you're doing a fabulous job. I look at this and I think, yeah, that's how it should be done. But you know what? It's a lot of work. And I think ultimately it will change the nature of teaching in the future because I think that this the the ability to do it remotely will 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 become something that is it that you will just start to do, even when kids are all back in school, you will probably have more things online that they can do for their homework. It's a, it's, we are really at a point in time where the nature of teaching, it's not so much that the teaching itself is changing. You have to work with the kids. You have to understand what they're doing, what they need, et cetera. But the methods of delivery are changing and I can only say I am really impressed. So thank you.
Other questions, comments? Mariah?
Again, not a question, just a comment and just echoing everything Barbara said. I mean, I knew it was a lot of work, but the idea of putting together one of those slide decks like on a daily basis blows my mind of knowing that you're going to work all day and then coming home and doing that at night is like, I am, I am truly in awe. So, so thank you. That's what I want to say is thank you.
Jennifer?
I'm not sure of anything new to add, but I want to add to the echo of voices. I know what an incredibly challenging job it is. An already hard job has become doubly hard. The amount of planning that has to go into hybrid or probably, I'm sure even remote, fully remote learning is an incredible lift that if there's a lot of, people keep saying not double planning, but I do think and so it's just amazing. And so I thank our amazing educators because it's a very hard job. It's very hard. All of our educators are working really, really hard. It's and it's nice to sort of highlight how hard it is because we're just a lot of work. People are working all night. It's like, I think in a lot of ways, it's like being a new teacher all over again. You're working all night until midnight and you're working weekends. And so we're, we thank you. I thank you because I know it's really hard.
Helen? Helen, you're on mute?
Sorry, I thought I'd unmuted. Sorry about that. Just so Shannon and Emily know, Jennifer is a third grade teacher in Newton, so she really knows what you're going through. And I too appreciate it, just like everybody else has said. I was wondering though, also, are there technology things that you, I know we're getting the owls and I'm not sure you're aware of that that can hopefully help you, Shannon, with not having to set up five different things in the classroom. But other than that, are there other things like that, little things that can make a difference that we might be able to be helpful with? I mean,
I think one of the challenges when we're having both cohorts at the same time is having the kids at home be able to hear the kids in the classroom. As a teacher, I've had a lot of practice with projecting my voice. We have a voice amplifier from our PTO. And just with experience, you know, you know how to speak in front of the group. And I think I don't know what this would look like, but my team has talked a lot about like, do we buy like little microphones that you use for karaoke or something because we want to continue having that cross-cohort connection. But it becomes so challenging when the kids at home can't hear the kids in school too. So some sort of like microphone or voice amplifier for students.
Helen, you're on mute again.
That did it on its own. There's some phantom here that just turned it up because I didn't touch it. But if the kids were to wear like a headphone with a microphone, you know, type of thing like when you plug it in or use for it, does that help?
I don't know. It's almost, my team was talking about it and we were like, it's like what you would need in a town hall meeting, you know, when all the desks have a little microphone attached to it. It honestly, something like that right now will have a kid maybe walk up towards the desktop or wherever the audio is connected, which does somewhat help. Or we're practicing projecting voices, but also not too loud because of course with the mask and everything. It's just been really hard. And then another thing my team talked about was different types of Bluetooth headphones that might be helpful, but we're not physically connected to a computer.
Dimitri?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you. It's really great. My question is a little bit in the weed. Can you tell us a little bit, how do you handle assessments in this environment? How do you assess and how do you give individual feedback?
I'll start. So one thing that I didn't mention as, as I was sharing the deck that then Shannon's presentation reminded me of was what Jocelyn and I made a decision to do. So the the idea of like an intentional planning about like what we're teaching in person, what's synchronous and what's asynchronous. What we did was we kind of flipped what we've done before and we're teaching double math and double ELA on the in-person days. And then there's a heavy dose of science and social studies at home along with independent reading. They're doing their cursive on their own. So all of those little things that we used to do in third grade that could be translated to at-home activities they're doing at home. And then, so what the way that we phrase it is that we're teaching any new content in school in person. So we're able to give that immediate feedback the way that we were before in like the old model. And then what they're doing at home is using some of the videos or other materials provided from curriculum coordinators. They might be re-watching a video of a lesson that we've already taught and it's a review or kind of like a jumpstart. And so then they're doing an activity that follows up on that. My students are wrapping up a writing unit before break, hopefully. And they then will be doing that in person in the classroom and I'll be assessing that the way that I would typically. Today with the snow day, we kind of had to reschedule and redo the slide decks late last night. But with the new math program that we're piloting or not piloting, but using this year, I have the ability to assign both workbook tasks or assessment tasks through the online portal and they're able to do them. The challenge with that is like anybody that's ever tried to write using a their trackpad to show their math work, like that's hard for an adult. It's hard for a third grader. So I'm having them do their work like in their math notebook and then just submit their answers. So there's a way to kind of work around with the tech piece, but for the most part, we're doing any assessments and that new learning in person on our model. And then our our goal at home is exposure and review.
Oh, go ahead, Shannon. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was going to say we do some similar things in terms of where how we would assess. Some of it's the same as we would have done in other years. I feel like we're using a lot of digital tools for assessment too. Right now with the new math curriculum, some of the math coaches and specialists in the district have used this great feature Paradeck, which is an add-on to Google Slides where you have access to student work live in the moment during the lesson. And that's been a really great way to gain insight into student thinking. If we're going to do any sort of paper assessment, that would be on an in-person day. And I feel like on the in-person days, it can be helpful to have the student with you like right there next to you seeing their work pencil to paper because again, sometimes doing the digital writing and showing your thinking is harder. In terms of individual student feedback, with all of the Google docs that we have, we can leave comments on student work that create almost a dialogue back and forth. So if I leave them a message, they can respond to me. We can go back and forth and they basically have the same feedback they'd get in person too, regardless of if they're at home or in school with me.
Thank you, Shannon. We're, we're running a little out of time. I do have a quick question for Michelle. And that is, I believe Desi is coming out with new guidelines. Are those, I think about the number of hours that are synchronous and asynchronous and is that to throw a whammy to the whole works that we have?
I don't think so. Erin is in the, in the midst of collecting information from each of the schools. And I took a quick look at it this afternoon and I'll have her chime in, but it it looks like we're going to be with it well within the the range that they're requiring. And just before Erin talks, I just want to let you know that there are several other teachers who were excited about the possibility of sharing and asked about the possibility of coming back at another time to share his practice. And so just wanted to put that out there because they weren't available tonight. So Erin, I'm going to just pass that to you to finish Suzanne's question.
Yeah, sure. So as Michelle said, I'm pretty sure that we will hit those guidelines that will begin starting January 19th. We're double checking those with schools now and Michelle's reviewing all of that by grade level, but essentially the new guidelines say that if we are in a hybrid model, students should be receiving 35 hours over a 10-day period, so over a two-week period of what they're calling live instruction. So that's either in-person in school or synchronous over Zoom. And if we're in a remote school, so the RLA, that number just jumps up to 40. But like I said, we're hitting it with most of our schools. We're just double checking that that's happening before the policy actually goes in place in the beginning of January.
Great, thank you. I mean, I mean, just the program sounds so good. I would hate for us to have to fall back and totally regroup. So Emily?
I'd just like to make one last comment about schedules as several school committee members noted just the amount of time and like, I mean, it really takes a special brain to kind of be able to parallel plane, plan like what's happening at home and then what's happening in the classroom and then sync them. Although I was excited to be able to see cohort B next week before break and for social emotional reasons, that completely makes sense. Jocelyn and I, the other third grade teacher at Runcle, we had already planned out into January and created those slides. Shannon's nodding. And so when we make a pivot like that, we need more notice. Like that's, that's like a midnight night for me than like remaking slide decks. I'm shuffling things that were already made where I'm thinking like I'm in my home stretch and all of a sudden I am not. And then there's a snow day and maybe no school tomorrow. And you know, we're, we're back scheduling again and just the amount of time that we're losing in rescheduling or replanning things that we have already done is really hard. And, and, and we're already putting like so much in. So at the further out that you can look, I would say at least for, at least for us and Shannon, maybe you can chime in, we're planning like three weeks ahead. So we, we have to do that to be able to make sure that hard copies of paper materials are home with cohorts on the right days. We have to be able to do that to communicate to parents like what needs to come to school and what can stay at home. And when we're planning three weeks out, like we need, we need the administration to be also thinking three weeks or further out so that we're not undoing at planning that we've already done.
I, I would completely echo everything that Emily just said. I think your team's a little bit further ahead of than mine with the three weeks in advance, but we had already planned through break. We were planning the first week of January. We understand as well, like the social emotional part of having cohort B in on Tuesday. I've got to say, my class was devastated because cohort B does not get a live PE class and Tuesday was their chance. But we're doing a Thursday schedule where fifth grade has no specials. And so they were just devastated. And so I think we need to do some thinking about when we're scheduling and how we're planning things. How how does it impact on all the different levels? And I know there's so many different things to take into consideration, but especially with the special distribution. That's something that we really need to think about and how we can make that more equitable and how teachers can have enough planning time to adjust for these schedule changes as well.
So thank you so much. I think there are some things we just don't think about. Just the little details perhaps that spent so much time on to make it work. And that's why it's so good to have you here. So thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing. I think Michelle will take you up on your offer to have others come at another time because it's really helpful to us. I think to hear, to hear and to see, to see what it is you're doing. So thank you. You're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you're also welcome to go, you are home. You don't have to go home to start your night. So thank you very much. And thank you, Michelle. We're going to move to, are we moving to Driscoll now, Jim? The update on Driscoll. I didn't know Susan needs to be here for that.
Suzanne? I had spoken with, I had spoken with Susan earlier about the fact that maybe she might not be here for this part and I would introduce the people who are probably going to be speaking.
Okay, great.
So that we should go ahead. She's seen the presentation a number of times. So and she'll be here to answer the questions, I imagine, by the time we get to the end. And we have with us here today, and I'm going to look, I know Jonathan Levy. I saw him. Hi, Jonathan. And Jim, Jonathan Levy is our architect for the Driscoll project, Jonathan Levy Associates, along with Phil, who I think is, I can't see everybody at once. So I mean, if I miss somebody, just let me know. Phil Gray is here also. Both Brookline residents, just as an aside. Then we have Jim Rogers from Left Field, which is our owner's project manager, along with Lynn Stapleton and Jen Carlson. You're all on the same page, so that was easy. We also have our contractor. Where, I'm sorry.
Walt Kincaid here from Gilbane and Linda Callahan. We also have Adam Keen and Matt Casey from Left Field. We have pretty much the whole team.
So, and the purpose of today was we were talking at one of the staff meetings that the school committee really hasn't as a group and the the community at large, hasn't been updated on the project, where we are, the, the drawings, the, the the, all the work that's been done in terms of managing the project, thinking it through, making sure kids have places to play, et cetera. So I, we asked them to come and to present to the school committee all that information. And I'm not sure exactly And I'm not sure exactly who's gonna take the lead here. Okay, Jonathan, great. So Robin, if you could give Jonathan presenting privileges, because I have a feeling you're gonna be putting something up on the screen, correct? Yep.
And then we have two, two motions that we need to vote on afterwards.
Right. After they do all the, the presentation, I can present those. Those are the proprietary.
Oh, right. I saw those, yeah.
Yep. And what was the second?
Contract amendment from Left Field, Left Field.
That wasn't in the consent agenda?
No, I believe we pulled it from the consent.
Oh, okay. We can do both.
Okay, thanks.
So I'm not sure who is actually, because I wasn't there when you were presenting. Jonathan, you're the one who's presenting, correct?
I'll start, yes.
Okay.
To be able to share my screen and it's not, now it's allowing me. Very good.
And just one other thing. I mean, the reason we want it is because this is really exciting stuff that we're doing at Driscoll and we should be really proud. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Helen. Suzanne, how much time would you like me to spend? I assume we'll, we'll present a little bit and I'll share me time for questions. It's 8:13 now.
Well, it would be nice if we'd be done by nine, because we still have quite a few things on our agenda. Is that possible?
Oh, that's easily possible. I was thinking a half an hour altogether.
Well, we did give you a half hour, but I know it's hard to get anything done in a half hour. So anywhere between a half hour and 45 minutes would be great.
Wonderful. Okay, well, we'll shoot for half an hour.
Just to jump in quickly, Jonathan, Left Field and Gilbane have a couple of things too. So if there are, if you have five minutes, that'd be perfect.
Very good. Okay, well, it's wonderful to be with you this evening. Yes, it has been a long time and I think this is actually a little bit overdue. There's a lot of work that's been undertaken, a lot of great discoveries about the relationship between building and education that I want to share with you that were made by the entire team. But more than that, in concert with the school building advisory committee, who put in a tremendous effort during what is often known as the design development phase. And I'm gonna explain that to you in just, just a minute. So to start, I wanted to make reference to a, a document that you all received this afternoon. And we call it a design development handbook. It's something that my firm customarily prepares at the end of the design development phase for each of our projects. And I hope you'll have an opportunity to at least flip through it. And there's also hard copies available if you should. It's so hard to, I would have distributed those to you if we had met in person. But what I'm about to go through is, is all contained in that booklet and more is contained in that booklet. And I'm just gonna survey the, some of the highlights of, of what, what, what that is. Design development is a stage beyond schematic design, which is formulating the outlines of, of a project, particularly its relationship to its site, its overall contours and the arrangement of spaces within the building, the overall arrangement. And during design development, we have really the joy, I would call it, in our office, because it's our favorite phase of work in our office. The joy of discovering exactly how a building will be used by the people that will live in it and what every space will be like, what the surfaces will be like. And then most important, how education will occur there and the interactivity between education and physical environments. And now physical complemented by virtual environments, which, which I think is the exciting part of, of our work. So I'm gonna describe that to you briefly. So I divided this into three main sections. There's an additional section in the book, which for those who aren't familiar with the project, just gives them a little bit of background. The first is making a better school. That's our mission, is making a better school. Someone once told me, I think it was on the Building Commission, he said, Jonathan, go away and make the best school that's ever been built in the United States. I said, well, that's a tall order, but we'll, we'll, we'll do our best. And I think there have been a number of things that were inspired by the town of Brookline's educational direction and working with the teachers that, that are really terrific and new and, and exciting about the future. Some of which respond to things that I was just hearing a moment ago when teachers were talking about the way they're teaching today. So to start, let's look at the overall building from a very interesting and important place, which is the park side, which is the westbound terrace view, where we're literally exchanging a school for an open space. We're taking the school where the school should not be and sort of impacted in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And we're putting it where the school should be, which is closer to Washington Street and that level of density. And then we're exchanging that for where the school is being taken away, a wonderful open space, park slash playground or playground slash park that will be embedded in the heart of that residential community. And I think it's gonna make everyone's lives better, but especially the kids, bringing them away from Washington Street more onto the westbound terrace. So this is a view from there and this is the playground in front, which we'll be able to see in greater detail in a minute. Features that I think are so important are the way the, the, the shared spaces of the building, including the cafeteria at the lower level. Can you see my cursor as I move it around, my little hand? The way the cafeteria spills out onto this open space and the way the upper reaches of the shared project spaces capture views of the, of the parkland that's directly outdoors. Now I'm gonna go directly into, jump right into the floor plans, which we're then gonna use to refer back to as the, for orientation as to the individual spaces. So this is the first floor. I'm gonna bring you in through the first floor plan. This is Washington Street at the bottom. And this is the main entrance through the entrance vestibule. To the right is the administration suite with all those offices and places for serving the, the faculty and the parents. And then immediately in front of you is the shared cafeteria, which importantly in this building is brought into the center of the building, is not at the periphery. To the left is the performance suite, including the multipurpose area, the band rooms and the music rooms, including practice rooms. And then the service areas all sequestered off to the east, taking advantage of the existence already today of a service alley. So we really piggybacked on the availability of that service alley to keep us from having to use up that valuable space on-site. And then to the north, at the first floor level are the Maker Spaces Fab Lab and the upper reaches of the, of the gymnasium. This is an important orientation for the building because many of the children will be dropped off by parents along westbound terrace. And they will be able to be seen as they walk the entire distance from their drop-off lane down these stairs and into the westbound terrace. Or as we call it in the office, the park entrance into the school. On this, let's go downstairs however. Right off this vestibule for community participants in the athletic suite, you can go right down a set of stairs and then go down to the athletic suite, which is on the ground floor with its lockers and so on. There's also more mechanical and service spaces. As we go up the main stairs, you come to the central project areas, which are, as we call them, according to the town's program. But these are the collaboration heart. This is the collaboration heart of the, of the building, which really makes it a building for 21st century learning, where kids can come together and break out of their classrooms to do collaborative work. This level is devoted to the younger age kids. The cohorts in the building, which are divided into three groups, I would call it the, the lower school, the elementary school and the middle school, as was, as it was described in the district's program to us. Sort of three schools within a school are divided by, by level. So this is the lower school level with its pre-kindergarten and kindergarten classrooms, which surround an outdoor terrace. And each of these classrooms has doors directly onto that terrace so they can access it immediately. There's also a separate entrance just for the pre-kindergarten kids, so they can come in directly from the street and not have to run the gauntlet of the older kids in the main part of the building. Off to the left and to the bottom are the first and grade and second grade classrooms. I'll go up to the third floor level, continuing up the stairs. And here we see the elementary school kids with the grades three, four and five classrooms. Also the start of some of the shared common core elements, like the art classrooms, health, special education suites are quite elaborate in terms of their detail. I didn't mean the word elaborate, but I just meant that they were, they're very specific in terms of the room, the types and sizes of rooms that there are. And they're distributed in a very diffused pattern throughout the building. So there's no kind of, there's no kind of concentration of special education anywhere within the building. And per their request, the unique request and very interesting request of the Driscoll School, the media center is located in the, in the midst of all the classrooms on the third floor level. You see it here in pink. Then finally up to the middle school level, grade six through eight, you can see six through eight classrooms. And the theme there is, is the science classrooms were draw grouped here in the middle with much larger classrooms and more, and more depth and more light. Now we can dig in a little bit more into the detail of the building. This is the south elevation along Washington Street where the school buses will come. And you can see some of the features of the south elevation, such as overlooking Washington Street. There will be a terrace in the spirit of library gardens, which opens out from the library or media center. So the kids can bring books out into the light with very tall guardrails for safety. And also to be softened, there's a trellis-like element. The front door has a large canopy to shelter the children. It's made of translucent glass so that it's not a dark place. And one of the things that I think we've always tried to achieve in our schoolwork is to make sure that the entrance to the building is facing south so that it's a warm sunny place, a convivial place where people feel attracted to gather together. Also, right inside the front door, there's a welcome area where children, faculty and parents can gather in need, have a cup of coffee, enjoy one another's company on soft seating right by the front door. And it's also a place where children's artwork will be, or children's work will be displayed. And there's also a monitor there, which is sometimes called the school dashboard, which will include sustainability information about the school. Really the building block of, of our school is the classroom suite. That's where we put the, the majority of our effort. We think that's the most important place in the school, because that's where the kids and the teachers spend the most amount of time. So this classroom suite is combined, consists of two classrooms ganging together. And they're joined in the center by a teacher preparation office, which is dedicated teacher space so that their desk is not in the middle of the classroom encumbering the classroom functionally, so that that classroom can be available for other uses when the teacher's doing preparation. But also gives that teachers a private place where they can have their things spread out, lockable. And they can also collaborate in that space. So it's, that's here and it's glass enclosed on the corridor side. And it also has glass looking in to the classrooms. The glass in the building is something which is really a part of what's called visible learning. But of course, it's constrained by today our concerns about security. So we're able to both provide the glass and through these fins and other devices, be able to occlude views into the classroom so that there's a safety zone within each classroom that doesn't rely on teachers having to pull shades, for example. And then one other feature that I'm really proud of is this sweeping corner. So it's interesting to think of a classroom not just as a set of walls, but also as a set of corners and thinking about what happens programmatically in each corner. And in this back corner, it's often a dead corner in a classroom. And we've turned it really into a kind of mini teachings theater. And at the same time, there's a continuous almost 40-foot length of, of writable magnetic surface with, that allows for uninterrupted presentations along those entire, the entirety of those two walls. And then finally, at the outside, each classroom has its own bay window, just like the kind of bay windows you've seen in a home, where kids can congregate, come together, have a sense of shelter within the shelter of the classroom and do some group projects, as you can see here. Then there's a variety of other specialized spaces. I'm not gonna dwell too much on the detail of those. You can dig in further. If you're interested in, always shoot me emails or shoot them to Susan and she'll get them to me and I can answer questions that may arise from your perusal of the booklet, the art classrooms, the science classrooms, which widen all out into the, the, the display or the, the, the presentation space, the teaching space. So each one of these has a widened area. Each classroom, by the way, has a teaching wall and monitor. And most of the surfaces within the classroom are writable magnetic surface, meaning that they can both be used for writing and for presentations and, and display. Special education suites are divided into a whole series of particular areas, all relating to one another carefully programmatically through over 25 meetings that we had with the school during the preparation of the program. The collaboration breakout spaces are pretty exciting. Somebody once asked me what it means to be a school architect most. And what I say in response is it means making a building that children want to go to, making a, a building that's about children and what they would love to see. And in a way, we've made a kind of intellectual playground or jungle gym in the center of the building, where there will be a series of breakout spaces, which are such an important part of contemporary teaching, where they can go and do individual work in groups. They are closable with doors, so that if there's private things that need to go on, the door can be closed. And one really feature that we're excited about and think the kids will love is the, is the round study bar at the middle school level at the top. These project areas, some of them also break out into outdoor spaces. There's a project balcony on the second floor, for example, with the main collaboration spaces. The media center on the left, Maker Space and Fabrication Spaces, multipurpose room that I just described earlier, features a raised wooden stage, flats floor with movable seating, so it can be configured for many different purposes. It does have a projection balcony, which is a nice feature that can be used also for adjusting lighting for real serious theater presentations. The stage has configurable upstage curtains, so it can be used either for drama or music. And it's mostly wood panel, so it'll be a very nice place for community. I think it'll be a treasured asset for the community to come and, and make events there. The corridors and circulation, we try to give as much attention to almost as the classrooms. So they're shaped in a way that takes away from the formal institutional quality of a double loaded corridor. The, the teacher preparation rooms that I mentioned earlier sort of project out into the class, into the corridor space so that they have angled views all the way up and down the corridors, both for supervision and to be observed doing their good work and modeling collaboration and work habits for the students who are passing by. The athletic suite consists of a large 6,000-square-foot gymnasium with room for spectator seating. There's also a health hall, health alternatives room, which my render thought means having exercise equipment. And I don't think that really is what it means in a K-38 school. But this is for different types of, you know, dance and other kinds of health alternatives. Then we have locker rooms, also general use toilets for the public's use of the athletic suite on the ground floor and the athletic offices. uh on the ground floor and the athletic offices. Administration, I mentioned earlier, uh it's broken into two parts, the main o- open office space. There's an open space which uh where the staff can come together in a way where they can be seen and where they can even have easy, easy access to folks who uh who come up to the uh welcome uh counter. There's also a closed space in the back where the teacher mail will be and some of the equipment. Uh there's a nice conference room. There's a big open principal's office with views uh not only of the school diagonally into the cafeteria uh which of course we close off with curtains, but also to uh the 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 street and to the students' path uh entering the building if it's desired to have those views. And then a bunch of offices, medical suites at the back with access both separately from an independent corridor and also through the academic suite itself. There's also uh PTO offices uh which are in the basement uh and storage for a variety of other different uh kinds of purposes. Cafeteria itself, as I mentioned, I think the wonderful part about it is that it opens onto a terrace, which is then part of the park. In terms of the neighborhood, I just described earlier how we moved the building to the street and the open space into the neighborhood, but also the tr- the three-winged uh form of the building creates three uh areas, outdoor areas, so that there's a reciprocal relationship between the outdoors uh and the indoors. On the one side, the northwest side is the parking and playground zone for uh most of the play equipment. On the northeast side is the place for the children, really dedicated for the young children. Then on the front is the civics civic face, which is really going to, as the planning commission, I think, uh recognized and was very enthusiastic about, given a uh a new shape to Washington Street and a terrific uh asset to Washington Square, uh sort of plugging an open hole uh in the urban fabric. Um in terms of the park and playground areas, this is the wonderful scheme that was worked out together with our landscape architect and uh parks and open space. Uh also with a whole variety of community meetings to understand basically how that would work. There will be a new synthetic playfield. Uh there will be an elementary and a middle school playground. Uh lots of uh hard space for foursquare and other such things. Also, the maker space and the fab labs open out directly onto the space so they can have outdoor uh education space as well. Parking, uh twenty-six spaces in one location and ten uh spaces in the other. Here's the front door again uh from Washington Street, just to reiterate the orientation. And off to the left, there'll be a little pocket park, very much like the one that's there today. It's sort of set uh better developed and more usable, a small pergola for shade and comfort uh during the summer summertime. And as I said, this is the, in in some, and many of you will remember this from the early stages of the design, we've increased the usable open space on the site from what it is today, around eighty thousand square feet uh to uh over nine, I, over ninety-seven thousand. So uh this, there's quite an increase in uh the amount of uh available open space in this very dense uh part of Brookline where open space is quite precious. The view from West Point Terrace, uh to give you a 3D idea of what we were just looking at. This is West Point Terrace here, running in front of the page, and this is that uh wonderful dedicated uh young children uh play area on the rooftop of the gymnasium surrounded by the pre-kindergarten classrooms on one side and the kindergarten classrooms on the other with the science and art classrooms uh overlooking them. This is the Washington Street's uh front uh with uh the existing commercial buildings in the foreground. And you can see how the uh from an urban designer's point of view, how the building is divided into a series of sub-masses with the administration wing at its single story, reflecting the single story of the commercial buildings. And then on the other side, how the multi-purpose space, which is at two stories, reflects the two and a half story height of the adjoining uh residences. The window patterns, uh the bay windows have a lot to do with breaking down the scale of the building and making it seem almost like housing, I would say, um and and reflecting the scale of the people occupying uh the building within. And there are lots of bay windows in our neighborhood. Uh and even bay windows on the uh on the existing school. Here's uh that wonderful set of bay windows in the old Gothic uh what was to be the auditorium that we actually renovated years ago uh and some of the other uh bay window types in the in the neighborhood. Also, I think you you would be interested somewhat in uh in how we've made a better building, a building that will last longer, that will take less to maintain. Um and some of the innovation that went into doing that. Uh one of the key things about uh classroom is providing daylight in lieu of artificial light uh because we know educationally that children do quantitatively perform better uh standardized tests in natural light, believe it or not, uh than in artificial light. In order to do that, we've raised the height of the ceiling by collecting and concentrating all the mechanical systems that are normally running around um inefficiently above drop ceilings by collecting them all into one central element that runs down the middle of the space and also collecting them in the back of the room uh close to the corridor so that the daylight can spill in from the front. Also, another thing uh that would be a subtlety that is not going to be a subtlety years from now when the building inevitably will be changed in the way that it's used is the alignment of structure with the occupied spaces within the building. And as you noted a moment ago, uh there are many different kinds, sizes, and shapes of spaces that make up offices and special education spaces within the building. Uh in this building, in the new Driscoll, all of those are inscribed within the shape of a typical classroom so that um and that's done through the orientation of structure and making sure structure doesn't get in the way so that in the future, these pink lines, which represent the subdivisions of all those minor spaces, could be removed and these spaces could revert to full classroom spaces. So that allows for a great deal of flexibility uh in the future. The mechanical systems of the building are super important, especially today, but they're always important because uh a lot of air changes makes for children who are healthier and more attentive. And the displacement ventilation system is one type of ventilation system that we helped pioneer with one of the first uh such buildings in the state. Uh and the new Driscoll will have that system. Very low air velocity, the wind, the the uh air comes in new uh at a low point in the classroom and then rises to the height of the classroom without mixing uh so that uh germs are not mixed together and then spread within the classroom. That's one of a number of different features. Classroom daylighting, I was uh mentioned earlier, having to do with the height of the building, but also augmented by the introduction of what are called light shelves uh that bounce light uh from the sun or from the dome of the sky, just as importantly, on a gray day or when the sun's not directly in front of the classroom, to this height of the ceiling and then back to the depth of the classroom, so that the depth of the classroom actually is benefiting as much from the daylight as the front of the classroom, which is actually being partially shaded intentionally by a light shelf in order to uh make the lighting uh at uh work, work table level uh more uniform throughout the space. And in the uh Driscoll, we're doing this through the use of a multi-purpose uh panel, which also provides perimeter uh heat to the edges of the building. It's a very environmentally responsible building. It's uh lead silver and has the potential possibly uh to go to lead gold. Uh I can't get into all the detail now, but there are many features that you can study uh when you come back to this booklet, if you have a chance. At this point, we are quite confident that the building will incorporate geothermal energy, uh which are part of the documents. Uh there are thirty-nine wells uh planned for the building, which will help uh provide a very low maintenance and very durable uh HVAC system and also reduce uh the consumption of energy. Uh it's an all-electric building, of course, as we all in Brookline know. Part of that electricity, about twenty percent of the overall electrical needs of the building will be supplied by electrical roof panels. Some really interesting details uh for those of you who are uh fans of uh architectural technology um having to do with cost-saving measures that might go unnoticed. For example, uh a proprietary uh brick system, well, not proprietary in the sense that uh you're going to be looking at in a moment, but in the sense that uh it's something which we've invented and adopted in our schools using an eight-by-eight brick, which is labor-saving. Uh with one eight-by-eight brick, you're uh laying up the equivalent of three ordinary brick units, so it really reduces the cost of brick, most of which is in the labor to assemble it, not so much in the material. And we do that and at the same time, keep the human scale by adding scores uh to those bricks. That's one feature. In the classroom itself, uh we use impact-resistant uh techdom uh at the uh at the clear story areas, which also provide our acoustic performance that's needed. There will be a bumper rail, whether it's made of uh high-abuse uh gypsum board or plastic laminate, which is one of the upgraded alternates that we're studying. The the, in essence, the entire wall uh system from the base uh to the, as high as you can reach, is armored uh against uh abuse and deterioration in the future. And this goes down to the smallest of details that we're interested in. Having worked on so many school renovation projects, we've seen so many focus on dilapidated cabinets. And uh in our JLA portfolio, what we do is we add special hardwood places for you to to fasten the hinges so that the doors don't get broken off or or fall off. So that gives you a sort of a tour of where we are at the end of DD. I hope that didn't take more than uh twenty minutes or half an hour. I don't know how, I didn't get a clock in front of me somehow. But uh I'd I'd love to hear any questions that you might have. I think it's a very exciting project for the future of Brookline and not only uh for the town in terms of being a a durable and maintainable community municipal asset, but also the excitement that the kids will experience uh when they, when they go there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Let's open it up to comments or questions. Uh perhaps if you don't share this, if we take the sharing of the screen down, then I can see who. Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns, thoughts? Uh Jonathan, I had one just to kick it off. I know you, I'm sure you've talked about this, but I just don't know the answer. Is the gym uh have a direct uh access to the outside so that people don't have to go through the school if they're using the gym facilities?
Yes, it does. Uh there's, there's a direct community access from uh the park entrance.
Yeah, thank you. Uh I'm not seeing anything else right now, so why don't we go to?
Okay.
Mariah has something. Mariah?
Um I had, we just had that great uh presentation that from the teachers, which I, I can't remember if you were actually here for or not, but I was just wondering if um as if you were there for that or just hearing about the ways that pedagogy has, I feel like, taken, had a huge sort of forced um changes in ways that there might be interesting innovations that teachers might take forward, how that might sort of change the... Do you feel like the classroom design will be able to um evolve sort of concurrently with whatever teachers might be taking forwards from this year?
Well, that is a a very focused and interesting question that we're all dwelling upon right now. I think that we're our, we we already were um before COVID. It's just that COVID has accelerated things that have already started to evolve in terms of the hybridization of teaching. I've been involved in higher ed teaching for many years and, you know, we already saw uh how much of uh of that kind of education has blended together, virtual and and physical instruction. I think the building has been designed to be flexible for the future. And the areas of flexibility that I would point out are include especially the classroom suite. So if you're a classroom teacher and you're thinking about joining together with another classroom in order to create a larger uh group of students from whom whom then can gang together to create collaborative groups uh that being able to open that wall and being able to combine those two rooms, I think will be enormously helpful. I also think being able to provide separate teacher space uh turns the classroom into something very different than it used to be. It's not an owned teacher space anymore. The teachers can own it or not own it as much as they'd like to, but it also becomes much more flexible in terms of the way uh that it's programmed. And then finally, we have a whole variety of different kinds of of places where kids can come together around uh collaboration. We have breakout rooms uh which are designed for between six and eight children uh within a, you know, either in a closed or open door situation. We have a project, a whole project area uh which is several thousand square feet where you can bring together two uh classes at least uh uh in a outside of the classroom as a destination. We have project balconies, which are open spaces uh where where kids can get together. So there's a whole landscape of teaching opportunities uh that that could inspire kids to come together in new ways. So I think, I think there's a lot of flexibility uh for adaptation to future uh learning.
Uh if I could, I'd also just add that the classrooms have all movable furniture that is that that is sort of modular. So basically, it allows the teacher to arrange the classroom very easily um the way that they want it in terms of groups being larger or smaller and and at really at will. And so the 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 sort of watchword of of flexibility for using it in ways we can't even imagine is one of the real objectives.
Suzanne, you're muted.
Oh yeah, Barbara?
I found this a fascinating presentation because I think back to the early plans for Driscoll, which I I had some questions about. Uh one of them was the big open space facing on Washington Street, which seems to have shifted around so that it is more facing the playground.
Yes.
Cafeteria is still where it was, but the library has been moved upstairs to the classroom, the the second floor classroom level. And as I look at it and think about it as someone with teaching in my mind, everything seems to flow together here in a very um in a very helpful way, if you're actually working in the building. You know, you, I I think that it was very imaginative before, but I think this is a building that is still very imaginative, but that will work in the best interest of the schools and the teachers. So I'm, I'm very pleased with what I see. There's a lot of room to move around. There's a lot of room in your classrooms to do all kinds of things. The uh particularly the space where you can write on much of the wall area. Um I I think this, this is um, I think this has really become a school that will work for teachers, will work for parents, will work most of all for kids and which we will be very happy with when it's built.
No, thank you, Barbara. It's very meaningful. Thank you.
So Matt, uh did did Leftfield want to say something? We have about ten more minutes uh before we should...
I'm gonna turn it over to you, uh Jen.
Thanks, Jonathan. That was an excellent presentation and update on design. Um we're excited to be a part of this project because of your design, so again, um much appreciated. Um Jen, do you want to start with the uh budget? We'll take the group through the, who we are budget-wise. I just want to leave enough time at the end to uh get through the vote for the proprietary items in the project. But I'm very quickly, this is the project budget. Um and if you look at the third column over, the revised total budget, that is the budget we're dealing with on this project. The first yellow subtotal you see was the feasibility portion of the project. That pro- pro- portion of the project is closed as that uh that part of the project is now behind us. Uh as we go down the budget, the the next subtotal for four point two million is is some of our project management fees involved in the project with both us and some representatives through the town. Next is the architectural portion of the budget, and that totals at the bottom of the page 7.976 million, including 700,000 of reimbursables as we go to page two, Jen. There is also 319,000 of pre-con, pre-construction items. That's the activities that Gil Bane has been doing over the past six months that have helped helped us prepare for their construction start and all our activities surrounding due diligence in and around logistics in the neighborhood. The budget, the construction budget for this project is 92,791, if everyone sees that. Again, third column over. And then finally, there's some contingencies at the bottom. There's 4.6 million in construction contingency, as well as 2 million of owner contingency. And there is a million six, a million 654 in furniture, fixture and equipment, and a million 120 in technology. So when you add all those up, we are trying to manage in this portion of the project to 115 million, $300,000. Total project cost, again, of which of that total 115 million, 92.7 million is construction. So where are we with that 92.7 million, Jen? If you now pull up the the estimate comparison sheet. So we have a construction manager, Gil Bane, who's working on the project with us. They'll, I think hopefully they'll have a moment to speak tonight. But they have done an estimate on the project. On the twentieth of November, Jonathan's office issued 90% construction documents. The latest set of plans, we are, we we took those plans. Jonathan's office had an estimator, a CHA, look at these plans to see how much they cost. We had Gil Bane, the construction manager, look to see how much they cost. And in doing so, if folks look at the first yellow row, the construction costs. CHA on the left column had seventeen, 72.4 million for construction costs. Gil Bane had 74.3 million, so they were within 2 million of one another. And then when we added in some of the below-the-line costs for contingencies, fee and insurance and the like. We look at the next yellow row, total estimated costs. Again, CHA, the architect's estimator was at 87.9 million. The construction manager of Gavain was at 91.5 million. And this is remembering that our budget was 92.7 million. So if we look at the variances at the bottom of the page. In both cases. Both the architect's estimator was had our, had the base job 4.8 million under the budget. And Gil Bane had the base job 1.2 million under the budget. When we add in three ad alternates that we have, and there's three ad alternates on the project. There's geothermal wells, there's bumper rails, and there's a terrazzo floor. The terrazzo floor was added most recently due to its longevity, ease of care. So if he, if we were, if we have the budget and collect to take those three ad alternates. According to Jonathan's estimator, we're still 2 million under the budget. And if we look at Gil Bane's estimate, if we were to take all three of the ad alternates, we would be slightly over the budget at a million six over. So we have some work to do there to bring that piece of the budget down. We're still going through a process by where we compare these two estimates and reconcile the two estimates together. That's a two-day process. We spent one day doing that thus far. We have a second day to go, but we hope to to bring these these. These two estimates a little closer than the the 4% that they're separating now. And I think it all bodes well for releasing this project for bid in early February. Any questions on the budget before I jump on schedule? I know we're moving fast, but I know you guys have all had a long night already as well. So any any questions on the budget? Or the estimate? Okay, if I could talk about schedule now. We are in the process of purchasing site work as we speak. We actually have the site work subcontractors out to site about 10 days ago to get an idea, a better idea about the project. We're hoping to have that site work package fully bought out. Bids in by the end of this month. We'll bring the couple of low bidders in and select one of those two bidders based on de-scoping their bids sometime in mid-January. We'll then look to go to the probably the building commission back here and the select board to get approval and move forward based on that, those site work bids. And then the rest of the project will be bid out with the rest of the design documents on February 1st of next year. We look to start site work on March 1st. And we look to finish this project in May of 23. The building with the with the fields finishing a year later in May of 24. And I'm sorry, again, we're moving so fast. I am trying to be sympathetic to your time. Any questions on the schedule? With that said, and I guess Helen, maybe I'll direct my questions to you. We have.
Can I ask my question? I have my hand. I don't, that's okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mariah.
Thanks. Sorry, my question is actually on the budget. And this is a question of ignorance, but maybe someone else doesn't know this either. So there was the estimator that came in below the.
Yep.
Cost, ballparked cost, and then there was Gil Bane that came in above. So so then what? Maybe I maybe you said this and I missed it, but.
No, no, sorry. So I I mentioned that we're doing a reconciliation process and it's a two-day process. So what we try to do, we endeavor to get, these budgets are right now separated by about 4%. The goal is we go through each and every one of these line items. And within each one of these line items, it's probably somewhere between a 40 and a 50-page estimate that supports the numbers you see on here. We go through each of the line items of the estimate and CHA, the architect's estimator says, you know, I've got X for concrete and Gil Bane will say I have Y for concrete. And then we'll talk about it as a group. We'll talk about pricing for concrete we just saw. We'll look at the units they carried for concrete. We'll look at, again, recent pricing. And then we'll we'll come to a determination that maybe Gil Bane needs to come down a little bit and CHA needs to come up a little bit. And the goal at the end of the reconciliation process is to hopefully be within 1% of one another as 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 two estimates.
And and below the costs, below the?
Hopefully below the costs. There's no guarantee we're going to get below the costs. Again, we are below the cost until we add in the 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 three ad alternates. If we aren't within the cost, there there may be some discussion, some additional discussion around VE, which we've taken value engineering measures to bring some of that cost down. I hope the million six that we're over now comes back down under a million. And and then we we need to look at some ways to save that money.
Thank you.
So Jim, if I want to add, I think I'm correct, but you correct me if I'm wrong. There was added scope to this project by the DPW of a sidewalk and other items that totaled about a million dollars. That's in here, correct?
That is correct, Helen. Yeah, yeah, in going through. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that people are aware that, you know, this is not something that was planned for originally in the school. We don't usually do the sidewalk across the street from a school. And yes, the town needs it. So I think we need to to weigh that piece in along with all the other numbers when we're talking about it to make sure people are aware. It's not that we don't want to do it, but that that adds about a million dollars to the cost.
Thanks, Helen. Thanks, Helen, Madeline.
It was also important to note, maybe Gil Bane would be the best to say this, but we are getting some actual pricing very shortly. And that that actual pricing will be germane to whether, how confident we are that the overall project will come in under budget. So that's that's news that we'll have within the next two weeks.
Thank you, Jonathan. Helen, again, if there are any questions, we're going to answer them. But we also had two other topics, if you felt it was germane to to this conversation. That was a brief explanation of the temp playground spaces and potentially some discussion around logistics and impacts on neighbors or butters. I don't know if if.
It seems to me there's going to be a a community meeting. And Susan, you correct me if I'm wrong. I saw Susan was back. But it seems to me there'll be a community meeting where that is the main focus.
Yes.
And I think it would be, if anybody's interested from the school committee, we should attend that that community meeting. I think I think because of the time framework of where we're at and we still have a long meeting to go.
Yes.
I think we might not do that, but we do need to do the votes on the proprietary.
Right, exactly. That's next. If you, yeah, right. So if we don't want to hit those last two items. So what we have here in front of us is a list of proprietary scope items that we'd like the school committee to vote on tonight to approve. We've presented this list previously in front of the building commission. They approved it. We need your approval tonight, hopefully, and then and then move on to the select board. Again, this is a list of items that have been requested by various stakeholders in the town so that we can have consistency of elements throughout the town. I think these are items that have been approved on other projects. We have, we have correspondence behind this that talks about the reason and the justification for each one of these items. So if anybody had a question, there's there's several pages of justification behind each one of these items as well. That we, you know, we could go through if, you know, if we thought we needed to take the time, but.
Well, I can. If I, can I speak?
Yes, please.
Hi, Helen.
Yeah, I actually did take the time to read all the backup information and was very impressed with what, you know, the reasoning behind all of it. We do have it in our packet. It it basically boils down to these are items and 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 that we use in all our buildings. And to have the same set of keys in all the buildings is an important piece because otherwise you're carrying 20,000 keys around with you. The same thing has to do with fire alarms, with a number of the other things from DPW, all the civil sites stuff that comes from DPW. I would recommend that we vote to accept the proprietary. Some of these are things, one of the reasons that I asked to have everything delineated on the different proprietary items was because the list seemed to get much longer. Well, part of the list got longer because of the the DPW aspects that we're doing. And part has to do with some other things that have happened over the years where we are finding that by unifying our, all of our buildings in in different ways, it it's a cost-saving for for us to be able to A, operate it well and B, be able to replace parts. So.
So Helen, we have two items that are part of the consent agenda, so we could vote for them together.
Okay.
As it's a consent agenda, we just moved them from the consent agenda to here. So would you, would you like to move those two items, A and B?
Yes, I'd like to move the proprietary items, and I think it's an amendment to the left field contract, correct?
Yes, correct.
The second one? Which I'm going to turn over to Susan maybe to do the amendment because I, or maybe Jim, you could just. Explain it because we.
Yeah, I might. I'm sorry. I didn't know we had something in front of us for left field tonight. Lynn or Jennifer, do you know what amendment that might be that's in front of the the school committee?
We have it in our packet. I know that and I.
This is Tony from the Brooklyn Department. It's the, it's amendment number five, I believe, in the amount of 11,770 dollars. And I believe, I don't have it in front of me. I think that's what I submitted to you a while ago. And it would be for structural peer review in fire system, fire alarm system design. Third-party review.
Right, so it's a part of, it's part of this construction project. It's it's required that there's a third-party review of those two systems that Tony just mentioned. We decided to do that under left field for ease of of procurement. So I think there's a change there for 11,000 some odd dollars. So that's for us to procure those two pieces of work, which, by the way, have been completed. And the comments have gone to Jonathan Levy's office. And Philip is working to incorporate those comments from these third-party reviewers as we speak.
So I will move both items together.
Okay, great. Can I have a second?
I'll second it. I'm delighted to be back just for the end.
Good, so let's. Could we unshare the screen just so I can see people, if you don't mind? Thank you. And we'll take a vote on the two. So Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, so thank you very much. Thank you to all who came, Jonathan Levy and your group and left field and your group. And we have Kilb, Kilbane here.
Yeah, Gil Bane's here as well.
Thank you as well.
Thank you so much.
I just want to add my thanks. I'm sorry I I had a conflict. But I just want to say that this morning's building committee meeting went very well. There were lots and lots of detailed questions, as we always get in Brookline, and the team really did a great job solidly answering them and, you know, a couple of follow-ups, but just a really great job. And I think Adam has crawled every inch of that site trying to look for place space for the kids on his hands and knees, because looking for place space for the kids. And I just, I really need to say thank you tremendously. Thank you. And I'm leaving for vacation with a heart full of gratitude and how hard this team has worked to get this to where it is. So thank you.
Thank you, Susan, and I appreciate the support of the the committee for the vote tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you certainly don't need to.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody. The next item was budget development. We're going to put that off to January 7th because we still have a lot to do. I would propose that we go down to number 12 legislative priorities. That's a 10-minute conversation. And then we have the MOU to vote on that also is down for 10 minutes. Then we can go back up to the school calendar first reading for 10 minutes. And then we're getting down to policy and. Subcommittees. So that's what I would propose. And so we can still keep moving. How about legislative priorities? Helen? Helen, are you there or did you go off? She kind of left.
I am. I'm sorry. I was, you know, I have an iPad and I don't have my computer. So I was looking for the legislative priorities while I was hearing you talk, and I didn't realize I was unmute. And I don't know if somebody else can put them up on the screen because that would help me because otherwise I I'm going back and forth. But let me just sort of frame the conversation. We looked at last year's legislative priorities and realized things were very different this year, obviously. And so what we decided to do was put in, you know, what has happened since last January in the schools, where we're at, and the the items that we think are important for the legislature to know that they can have some impact on. Items such as more money for COVID relief, items such as. Help me, I don't have it. Just, Mariah, you're wonderful. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So the issues that that we we felt that they could do things about were the COVID-related expenses at a minimum to level fund Chapter 70. To have an MCAS moratorium for this year, as the MASC is also suggesting. And the issue of expanding the open meeting law executive order to continue beyond the pandemic in order to allow for virtual meetings, such as what we're having now, or allow for members to be virtual. Those are the issues that go down a little further. Those are the issues that we we thought the, we had spoken last year quite a bit about the Look Act. And I attempted to reach our director of English learners, Mindy Paolo, but wasn't successful. So there may be more of an update on that. I'm not sure. And then, as we usually have, the continuing things that just never go away, that we still need funding for, the level funding. need funding for, the level funding of Medco that happened this year and that we would like either level funding or an increase in that. And then we did get, as everybody's aware, an increase in special education transportation funding. And I think Marion informed me that we had about 70%, 70% reimbursement on circuit breaker. The issue of the health insurance coverage for medically necessary treatment in schools and universal pre-K. So I don't know if people have had a chance to look at it, have any input they would like to, to, to give to us, thoughts.
Helen, are you, you're looking for a vote tonight or you're just letting us know?
Um, so I think I'm looking for consensus that these are the areas.
Okay.
And I, you know, this is a conversation that we have with them. And so we can vote it if you want, but I think I just, I need a consensus that we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, Susan?
Yeah, just one brief thing, I mean, it occurs to me and I was, I'm sorry, I was trying to find it while you were talking, but do we have any things in there about vaccines or vaccine distribution?
No.
So it may be worth saying that if there are mandates on the school systems with respect to distributing vaccines or vaccinating children, people, whomever, that those are not unfunded mandates, just because that was floating around as well of like, how are you going to have vaccines?
I said, I hadn't heard that.
It's just really how are you going to vaccinate everybody in the state, you know, let's do it in schools. So anyway, just, just somewhere to put it in the mix, but if that, if that comes to us.
We have always talked about unfunded mandates, obviously the LOOK Act was one of them, I'll include that with it, but, but put in the example of vaccinations, not that necessarily we don't want to do it, but we need to have it funded. Okay.
Other comments, Andy?
Still on the topic of vaccinations, does the legislature have any role in determining who gets vaccinated first? Because that could have a big impact on the schools. So I guess we could check whether they do, or whether that's.
Why don't we bring that up as a question to them?
Okay.
I did see in one of the newspaper articles that teachers were like in the second group of, of being vaccinated, but. Go ahead, I'm sorry, you were saying Suzanne?
No, they are, they are in phase two, you know, I don't know if there's, if there's differentiation within that group, you know, I don't, early childhood or high school teachers, I mean, I don't know if they're making any distinction about that.
Right, but again, like who is paying for those vaccines, who is administering those vaccines, setting up the tents to get people to go through them, I just, I'd be surprised if we didn't have any role, although that would be nice.
It should be the Department of Public Health, but I'm not sure they have the capacity, it may be a joint venture.
So just put it on the radar.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good, good, good call. Is there anything else anybody else has thought about or, or any of the wording, you know, if there's any of the wording that you think you'd like changed or?
Just always ask them what's on their radar that they might.
Oh, absolutely, this is, so what happens for those who haven't done this before, I'm sorry, this is not fair, for those who haven't done this before, usually what we do is send them the, the letter inviting them, they already know the date because Robin has always let them know, the letter inviting them, along with this sort of summary of the items that we're going to be talking about, so they can be prepared. They know that we will be asking them what are their priorities, what are the issues that they're thinking about. For Jim and some of the other members, we also invite the town, Mel Fleckner is invited and we invite Jess Wender Schubow to come, and we also invite, usually Melissa Goff comes and the advisory committee.
Sometimes the chair of the, chair of the select board?
Oh yeah, absolutely. And sometimes some other select board members too. So it's, it's, it's really, you know, in the past it was really great because we would have some refreshments and things, everybody's going to have to bring their own refreshments, but at least we'll be able to, to see one another and talk and, and tell them the issues that we're facing, so they, they can be helpful. I mean, they were helpful, I do know that, for instance, this year, in this year's budget, the Brooklyn Mental Health Center got some, I think an extra $250,000 from the legislature as an earmark, so.
And SEPSA Success did also, I think.
Right, it was less, I think it was.
The cream got some for us, I think.
Yeah, yeah, so these are the sorts of things that they can be helpful with and, and have been, you know what, and I will try to remember to thank them and this thing too for that.
Okay, thank you Helen, I think we're going to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, do I have a consensus that this is okay?
Yeah, if we have anything else, we can send it to you, right?
Absolutely, and anything that we forget, we can always bring up at the meeting.
Well, do you want to add on what Susan mentioned about the vaccination?
Oh, I will, I wrote that down so that I'll, I'll change that, I'll share it with the subcommittee, they'll take a look and then we'll get this, I'd like to get it out to them maybe before the holidays so that it reminds them about the meeting.
Matt?
Huh?
Yeah, I believe there's no cost to the, the vaccine, the vaccination to individuals, I believe federal government's providing that.
They're providing the, the vaccine, I'm not sure they're providing the equipment and the people to inject, I mean, to, to, not inject, what's the word?
So they're going, they're going to provide the supplies, not the services.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we have a little drum, a little drum roll, I think we're going to move to the vote, possible vote and approval of the memorandum of agreement with the BEU. Mariah, Andy, would you like to say a few words, everybody got a copy, so I don't know what to cut by yet, but, want to say any intro, just anything about it?
No, I mean.
It's done?
Yeah, I think, I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to give a speech, but maybe Andy, if you are, feel free to rest the microphone from me.
I said it was not, no.
Okay, but I, I'm very glad that we got to this point and, and I understood that the BEU ratified the MOA Monday, so that is.
I'll just say that it was a real team effort, Andy and Mariah really stepped up, so thank you so much for that, it was many, 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 many hours, many back and forth, a real exercise in negotiating, that's for sure. And I, Jim was there, spent so many hours as well, we had a whole team, which was helpful, including principals and special ed directors and who else, Joe Russo was there, just a whole, a whole team of people, and they did as well. But I think it's a, it's a good, solid MOA and I am going to vote to ratify it and I hope most members do. So I, I would like to move to vote to ratify the MOA, I'll open it up for discussion in a minute, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mariah, are there comments, questions, concerns?
Is it an MOA or an MOU?
Well, we say both, I guess.
I'm not sure what the difference is between the two.
No, one's memorandum of agreement, one's.
I know what it means.
Understanding, no, I don't know that there's a difference Helen, we use them interchangeably.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if it's worth mentioning how long it's for and sort of what's, where we are, what's next. I mean, given, by the way, the advisory committee did vote favorable action for us on a unanimous vote after more than an hour and a half of questions. So I think these two things together are just important to communicate and so maybe, I'm not sure how we do that, but, but hopefully they're, they're all, they are all sort of integral to our, you know, care and respect for educators and I just want to think about how we, how we tell people. But anyway, just for now, I just, I'm wondering if it may be worth saying a couple of words about what, what the basic parameters are, how long and that sort of thing.
So this is an addendum to the, the contract that they have now and it really is focused on this year, it's good for this year, this school year, and it addresses issues really around the pandemic and around hybrid and remote learning and about safety issues, both for staff and for students and families. And it's, it's not about wages or salaries, that's, that's not what this is about. We do need to have a, a contract negotiated, that's, that's the general contract, that's not this, so that, that work still needs to happen this year, but that is not what this is. Other questions, comments? Okay, we'll take a vote. Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Wow, that's great, thank you so much.
Yeah, I, I wanted to add my thanks to our entire team, the professional staff who I think spent at least 100 hours each, if you, if you add together the time we spent caucusing, planning and actually engaging in negotiations, something like 100 hours and maybe more, in addition to their 100 hour a week jobs that they're all doing right now.
Helen?
Yeah, and I'd like to thank the school committee negotiating team, in addition to the staff, you did that part, but you guys, I think we have to give you some combat pay.
We'll send a bill Helen.
We're going to double your salary for this year, okay?
Deal.
And while we're thanking people, Dr. Mariney, thank you, Jim, for your wise, cool, experienced head, kind of getting us through this, thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I, I'd like to say a few things too, and that is that the negotiations were carried out with focus, with sort of real vision, a real ability to communicate and with integrity and respect. It was, it was a long slog, make no mistake about it, we laughed about the late nights and we laughed about, you know, every Friday, Friday night, date night was negotiations. But I, but I will say that the, the staff hung in there the whole time, were present, contributed, offered guidance, but truly, the, the school, everybody should know, the school committee stepped up and really were instrumental in, in, in communicating the needs of, of the system and with respect to the needs of the staff and trying to really meld those two things and, and come to agreement. And an agreement we did come to, and, and I think it's a good agreement, it is for the remainder of this year, and it was, it, it didn't come without perseverance, but it also didn't come without commitment and, and a real, a real sense of we, we can work together, we can make this happen, and if we, if we stay together and if we're clear and if we're honest with each other, we can make it happen. So hats off to the school committee, I was proud to be a part of it and watch you guys in action, I thought you were great.
I must say hats off to the teachers on the union side because they too put in those hundreds some hours, so it was, everybody stayed focused and committed even and through our disagreements and so it was good to get to the end and to feel like it's, I, I feel like it's a good document and one that we can work with, so thank you. Let's go to, did you want to do a school calendar, Jim?
Suzanne, can I just ask one question? No, I didn't even raise my hand, it just popped into my mind, for anyone in the public who wants to see this document, does it get posted somewhere where they'll be able to see it?
Yeah, I think it's on the website, certainly on the BEU.
So it will be made public if it's not already, so they can find it? Okay, thank you.
Did you want to do the calendar, first reading, Jim?
Well, first, everyone has a copy of the calendar, I presume?
Yep, you gave it, we got it, Robin gave it to us.
The BEU has commented on the calendar and has approved, and this is a one-year approval because as you can see, the teachers would return in August, August 30th. And normally, the contract says they don't return until after September 1, but because Labor Day is so late and there are other holidays that intervene, then school would get out exceedingly late. And so to avoid having school get out very, very late in June, the, the BEU agreed to move the calendar beginning early, so they, they are going to start on August 30th, which I think is great. So that, that's basically the issue with the calendar.
Comments or questions? Okay, great, thank you.
I think the only thing to remember is to remind parents that, you know, school would begin before Labor Day when it does become, because that, you know, people don't get that into their head necessarily.
That's a good point, because that is a shift in thinking, so once the calendar's voted, we'll, we'll communicate that.
Suzanne? I had a question.
I'm sorry, Dimitri and then Jennifer, go ahead Dimitri.
Jim, are you projecting that we would be back in, in person teaching in October, in our, in August, or is this a decision you'll be making later?
Well, the, the conditions on the ground will tell us that Dimitri, but we are, we are really hoping, and you'll hear when we do the budget next time, that we're planning on school opening in September with everybody in. And we're hopeful, hopeful, hopeful that that's what it's going to be, but I can't say definitively until we see what's happening in the spring, whether in fact, the COVID is sort of the, the curves have turned way down and the vaccines are, are working and, and we're going forward. But the short answer to your question really is, we're hopeful about that and we're planning for it, and, but we have to remain nimble and you'll hear more about that as we go through the budget process.
Good.
Jennifer, did you have a comment?
Actually, I was just struggling trying to find the calendar, which I now have in front of me and I was just checking for some, I was just checking on the, the way that it looked and other days, including Lunar New Year, which has been a recent change, so I was just checking on that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, Susan?
Yeah, no, just, we, so the, the, the tradition of publishing sort of a rolling two-year calendar, just to kind of get, so that we're not always up against the wall, it just may be worth talking about that for one second, just sort of what I think, if we have, just what our thinking is on that.
I, I don't know whether there's any restriction on that, all I know is you have to vote the calendar and there has to be a certain input, the, the union has to weigh in on it, but I don't know that you can't have a two-year calendar, we could certainly have that discussion for planning purposes, that might not be an idea.
Yeah, we have in the past and I just wonder, I, it, it fell off the table somehow, but I just wanted to put it back on because I think it does give a, a level of predictability. If you're always doing, you know, an 18 month in advance, you kind of have, I mean, fix it if you need to, but I think people like the predictability.
Yeah, yeah, okay, sounds good.
Okay, I think we are ready for policies, David Pearlman, would you like to take it away?
Yes, I would, all right, so for today, we have a second reading on three policies and a first reading on another policy. I think the easiest one that we could address first would be the policy on immunizations. As many of you may recall, Trisha Laham, our head nurse, had drafted this and it was designed in such a way as to be nimble and to reflect state level requirements, because they do change from time to time and that way we don't have to constantly loop back to alter our policy accordingly. So I'm wondering if any of you have further thoughts on the immunization policy or whether you think this could be ready to be voted on today?
David?
Yes.
I, I did go through it, my sense is, at least in my perspective, I'm ready to vote on it today, but I don't know if a colleague's doing more time.
Mariah?
I have a question, because the, the policy that's in the folder looks like it hasn't changed from the last time.
The one change that should be in it is. The one change that should be in it is there was a slight language change medically indicated instead of best interest for the child. But other than that, there were really no other changes.
Okay, so the part that I had mentioned about how this wasn't, this didn't align with my experience. And someone else, I think it was Helen, had mentioned, maybe it wasn't Helen, someone had mentioned that that people also have to submit immunization records every year. That doesn't appear to be in here either.
I think from the discussion, there were others who had said that immunizations are submitted every year anyway. And so therefore, that wasn't necessarily something for the policy. But I'm certainly open to putting that in if that's something you feel that's important. I don't really have strong feelings on it either way.
I guess I just feel like it's confusing. And if the point is to make it clear that people need to submit immunizations, but then they also need to submit them at other time and it's not clear, then there could be some resistance. And also, again, it wasn't my first time in the school system and I needed to submit. So the language still isn't like, I mean, I'll abstain if everyone else wants to vote on it. I just don't think that it chives with what actually happens and could be confusing.
Jennifer?
Do we, I'm not sure that it's, I don't know that you have to put them in every year, the immunizations. I think it's certain key years that they have to be in. I don't know, I wish I wish that Ms. Laham was here so that she could sort of field that. Does it, is it something that's procedure or policy? I guess that's my question is.
The procedure in the system is that every family has to submit your medical report, which lists the immunization of the children every year. And every school handles that. So procedurally, that's taken care of.
Is there anyone from the administration who wants to comment on whether this is something that's written in a procedure somewhere? Or if we should explicitly add it to the policy? Because I I'm just a little concerned about adding something to the policy that might not reflect the procedure of how the school department like to proceed with immunization collection. So it would be helpful if we could hear from the administration about how that works.
I can follow up with Ms. Laham, David, and get back to you on that.
All right. Well, I would rather that we're all satisfied with the policy. I don't think this is super pressing that it has to be voted on today. So we could push this over to another date and hopefully we can get an answer to that question. All right, so next up, we have the policy against discrimination, sexual harassment, and retaliation. Maria Leytast did some considerable work on editing this since the last time that we met. And on the policy subcommittee meeting that we had on Monday evening, we had further discussion around it. The subcommittee members were sad, my sense was that we were all satisfied with the language as modified by Maria. Do other committee members have thoughts on it?
David, I just wonder if we could address, did you address the concerns of the public comment tonight?
So that we could not do because this is the first time I'm hearing it. So I was going to get to that momentarily, that I do think we want to provide an opportunity to perhaps insert some language to address the public input we heard today. And given that we heard that only about a couple hours ago. We're going to have to hold, we're going to have to probably put that over to a future date. But I still would like to hear from other committee members nonetheless, if there's anything else that they would like to see incorporated into this policy. Jennifer?
I think that we spent a couple sessions really looking at different versions of this. A much larger and longer one that then was changed significantly based on policies and procedures. We had some input, if I'm not mistaken, please correct me, David. We had some counsel give us some feedback on the policy and how it should be. We had several discussions about procedure versus policy. And so like, I know that at the subcommittee level, we've had, I feel, a good amount of conversation. And we've heard some public feedback in in those sessions. So but I'm particularly interested to hear from other members of the school committee about their thoughts and impressions specifically. There's a, it covers a lot of really sensitive stuff and important things that relate to both, you know, staff and students and anyone involved in the process. And a huge administrative piece with the changes to Title IX and a whole bunch of other things. So I'm just really interested in hearing, you know, what other people think and if they have questions. And I don't know, just want to get feedback from other people. Like, are people feel comfortable with the language? Are there any concerns people have? Do people feel like, well, we're gonna vote again, it looks like we're gonna have to vote another time, right, David? Not this day?
I think so, so that we can give another look to what we heard today in public comments. But just to reiterate what you were saying, Jennifer, in terms of the process of how this policy was developed. It was developed by an attorney who specializes in Title IX named Justin Gomes. And then Maria primarily worked on a second draft. And what she focused on was in order to sort of put sexual discrimination and other forms of harassment sort of on equal footing, she added some language so that it wasn't so focused on sexual harassment alone, which might create the appearance that we take other forms of discrimination less seriously, which we, of course, do not. It's just the reason we're working on this. There are changes in federal law that require that we make modifications on the Title IX portions. But we were looking to try to include just pretty much all forms of harassment and discrimination under the same umbrella. Because it makes more sense to do it that way. And so Maria worked on her second draft within, under that lens. All right, so Mariah?
Last time I made the comments about housing status and economic status in here, and I still don't see those either.
So I did look, I did follow up on that. I looked at our town discrimination policy. And I actually didn't see economic status listed as a class on on the town side. The other potential problem with that, economic class is not statutorily protected in the same way as some of these other categories. So it would be a little, it would be a little more complicated to include that in, at least in the same section as some of these other categories. We could certainly revisit that and look into it a bit further. But unless I missed, I don't think I saw that on the town side.
It's in Bylaw 3.14, but I'll send you the link. Thanks.
All right, anyone else? Now, how do others of you feel about including economic class? Just where this, where this would have implications for us would be around scholarships, around field trips, around student activities.
Why would it have implication around those?
Because if you can't make, not on the discrimination part, although some could perhaps argue that you're discriminating against someone of lesser means if you are allowing those who are of means to go on a trip and you're not providing for a family of lesser means. This is something that's come up with the policy subcommittee in the past when we were looking at field trip policy. So it's very tricky.
But we're not doing that.
Not at this time, no. But when we're crafting a policy, we just want to be careful about the other implications.
But is our plan to ever tell children who don't have enough money that they can't go to things? I guess I'm confused why that would even be like something that we'd be planning for in the future? Or having to leave room for in the future?
Would someone from the administration like to speak to this? Because we have had this discussion a lot. Casey or Mary Ellen?
So Nicole oversaw the field trip policy, so I'm not sure what the conversations were around that piece. I don't know if you were present at those either, Mary Ellen.
I think the the general sentiment, I believe, is really covered in the financial assistance policy. And I'd have to go back and look at the language, which is about making sure with the, first of all, with the foreign or international travel trips, there was general concern about the overall expense, regardless of income level and how some are more expensive than others and keeping those at a reasonable cost. And then there is an effort of additional fundraising and a variety of other funding mechanisms to support students who would, who are qualified under the financial assistance policy to be able to participate and and travel. And this high school has done that with a variety of different mechanisms. The school committee has not made any type of appropriation from the financial assistance account for international travel. Because they felt, at the time, the committee felt that it was sort of more on the optional level, but wanted to make sure that the financial assistance policy status was extended for those trips for students who wanted to attend. So I think there's some language in, I'd have to look at that policy to see if there's language in there. And I, and I thought, I'm pretty sure we dealt with it also in the field trip policy. And I also have to go back and look at that. I don't, I guess, my opinion is you can never put issues or statements of anti-discrimination in enough places. I think it's always good to sort of put places and cross-reference policies to prevent discrimination of students. So to make sure that you don't have somebody use a policy, policy where the statement is absent to say that a student is not qualified to attend. Because that policy doesn't state any anti-discrimination policy element. So I'm always more inclined to include a reference to prevention of discrimination in a pol, in each policy, if it seems to be related. I don't know if that makes, I think it requires policy subcommittee to go through and sort of see a bunch of policies out in front of it and compare the, compare them side by side to make sure they all are in sync.
Can I respond to that, Suzanne?
Yeah.
Just that Brookline is a town like, like many others, but a town of incredible economic inequality. And and to me, it feels like a moral, a moral thing to talk about, about making sure that we have a policy in place that involves discrimination against economic status and whether or not the field trip policy should be modified. It sounds like maybe it should if there's some gaps there. But I would feel very uncomfortable with this idea that feels like the tail wagging the dog to not include economic status in a policy about harassment, bullying, discrimination, and so forth. It's a real issue. It's a real issue among kids and we all know it. So I don't know why we wouldn't include it. That's all.
All right, anyone else? Jim?
Just a question of the definition of economic status as it applies to the policy. Would it be tied to free and reduced lunch? Would that be the standard? Do we, do you need a standard?
So the financial assistance policy actually sets that standard. And it's actually more generous than the free and reduced lunch because of the economic requirements to live in this community and at what income level. So it actually, because free and reduced lunch is only, well, reduced lunch is 180% times, 100%, sorry, 180% of the poverty level. Financial assistance, the free status starts at 200%. And the reason why we doubled it is because of families that are on the fringe, where you're a dollar over income level on the reduced lunch. And all of a sudden, you're not eligible for financial assistance. Well, in Brookline, you're still struggling. You're still, it is so that 200% sort of captures those fringe, that fringe or buffer groups of families. And then does a reduction from there at three times and, three times the poverty level and I think 350% times the poverty level. So we have that, that policy sets a standard.
There's a standard, that's all. And then the committee can decide, but you may want to ask and see if if we have, if there's any, I mean, it doesn't really matter if anybody else is doing the policy, but are there unintended consequences that we should just look at and and inform? Because the spirit of that is is pretty good and it's admirable. But we, since, you know, it it comes in without a lot of analysis, maybe we should just look and see are there any unintended consequences that we could corral? And then the committee can decide if they want to include that.
Oh, it sounds like we're sending this back, David, to your policy subcommittee.
Yes, okay. Then we have a first reading for the Public Schools of Brookline yearbook policy. So most other communities do not have a yearbook policy. I drafted this one using a private schools, a private high schools yearbook policy is sort of my model. And then I added some other sections to that. We've had a couple of robust discussions on this at the subcommittee level with a lot of public participation. And the differences between the first and second drafts primarily reflect that public input. We had input from CPAC. We had input from many other parents, as well as from Lori Lynn, who is the yearbook advisor at the high school. She was a panelist at our second discussion on the yearbook policy. I'm personally very pleased with how this has turned out. It, I really do think it's an accurate reflection of a broad base of stakeholders. Helen?
A quick question. Did you also ask the elementary school yearbook advisors?
So it was a bit difficult identifying who they are. I did try to do that, but the only person who responded and did participate was Lori Lynn at the high school.
Maybe, maybe it'd be worth it to ask the principals to ask their yearbook. I mean, you shouldn't have to figure out who it is. But that, if I had to guess, if there were issues, it would be more at the elementary school than at the high school. And so it might be worth just knowing from staff, you know, running this by them, maybe sending this to the principals and asking the principals to run, to confirm that this works. That's all.
So this will come back for a second reading, right, David?
Yes.
Hospital vote.
Was there anything else in the policy that anyone would like to comment on?
I got knocked off for some reason and had to rejoin. Can I just hear the answer to Helen, you infer that maybe at the elementary or the K-8 schools, maybe a little more information from that group. The high school may be a little more, high school yearbooks are more formal. And maybe the the middle school ones need to have some input from them. Is that what you were saying?
Yes, exactly. To the best of my recollection, the issue that came up around yearbooks was in an elementary school.
Okay, so David, maybe I can facilitate getting some information to you or some contact that will communicate with you. Would that be all right?
Yes, please.
Okay, good.
All right, any other comments on the yearbook policy or questions or input of any sort? All right, seeing none, we also had a
Sorry, David. Sorry, I was muted. Is your sense that we would be voting? Because I believe that the last time we had the subcommittee, we had some parents who who felt quite a sense of urgency to get the policy in place. So is it your sense that we would be asking for a vote in January?
That would be my hope, that we could vote at the meeting of January 7th because there are yearbook deadlines that are fast approaching.
That's right.
Some of them are as early as late January. So hopefully, we can do that. I do feel that this policy, perhaps compared to some of the other ones, is pretty far along. Of course, we want to get input from the K-8 level. But this really had, compared to other policies that are available. Uh, but this really had compared to other policies that are available for public comment. I received dozens of responses and I really do feel that a, a lot of parents with whom I interacted uh seem to support the current wording, so I'm very pleased with that.
Uh, yeah, this is an interesting question. Are there going to be yearbooks this year? How do you take pictures? Who takes the pictures?
Schools have been taking pictures this year.
They have.
We had picture day, yeah. In fact, our, in fact,
That's great.
No, RLA had picture day offered also.
Okay, so, sounds great, thank you.
All right, so we also were uh scheduled today for a second reading on school committee norms. We had previously discussed uh a couple of issues such as communication chain. Uh, who is it who can have direct access to uh the deputy superintendent? We had also discussed responding to emails and whether it would make sense to uh appoint someone specific to do that in a more systematic way. At the policy subcommittee meeting, it seemed like there was a preference to have a little more of the uh current flexibility and to put some trust in ourselves as school committee members that we're not going to overdo the reaching out to deputy superintendents. And that if we're going to do so, it's for an appropriate reason or because it's something that we're specifically tasked with working on, such as if we are the chair of a subcommittee uh and we are reaching out to uh the soup, the deputy superintendent who's our counterpart of sorts. Uh, or if we are the head of a certain, if we're the liaison to a townside committee and uh we want to reach out again to the appropriate counterpart for that. Or for working on something like uh negotiations, something that Andy brought up, uh where you might need access to a lot of people to sort of a, address a specific uh question that we would want to allow that type of direct communication. Because if everything is routed through you Jim or through our next superintendent, that might actually be burdening the superintendent more and creating more work for everyone in a sense. But at the same time, that does require discipline on school committee members to not overdo it and be uh contacting central office on a near daily basis with lots of emails and lots of requests. Uh, so we do have to police ourselves to some extent, but I'm not sure that it's appropriate for us to essentially codify that there needs to be a, a very rigid standard by which we have uh such communications. So that seemed to be the will of the subcommittee based on our discussion on Monday evening.
Uh, I, I, I think that works. Can you build in there a, a feedback mechanism? Uh, which, which would be framed so that the deputy superintendent wouldn't be in the position of having to complain, but would have a, a vehicle of being able to say this is a busy time or, you know, I, I, somehow to be able to uh to help with these, with the sort of self-discipline around it. So it's a, it's a responsive available person. But if, if it's coming from a bunch of different directions, being able to say, I can't deal with all this right now. Let's see if we can deal with it. To facilitate the communication on it. It seemed to me that, that we did, did, it would be good to have, but it had, would have to be something that was n- n- not precede as standoffish or I don't want to talk to you or any of that, but much more a matter of uh, you know, just being respectful of people's time, I guess, and being able to go back and forth with that. And, you know, reports are timely too and, and work products are timely for the school committee. But so that balance in, in, if, if it's, if sort of we're going to use good judgment around it, then uh let's look at the flip side of it, so using good judgment as well. So the relationship is strong and positive, but doesn't feel overwhelming.
Anyone else have thoughts?
Jim, can I just get some clarity um from you on this? When you're talking about the feedback mechanism, is it on the part of the superintendent? And that for the administrative part or going to the school committee members? I'm just trying to understand.
I, I would go like this Dimitri, let's say that you are a chair of a subcommittee, a school committee subcommittee. Then you should be able to contact, let's say I am a deputy of teaching and learning or something and you, and you need to get information because you're the subcommittee chair. You should be able to call me directly about that because that's your role. You need to get that information. You shouldn't have to go through a superintendent for that because you're the subcommittee chair. No question about that. Um, I'm thinking more in terms of you're the subcommittee chair of the school committee, whatever, so you have to contact me. There's another school committee member who's working with the town on something else and you, that person needs to contact me. And then there's another uh, a, a school committee member who's working on a special project that's going there and they need to contact me as well. I would like for the deputy to be able to say, you know, let's, 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 and, and not feel like I can't do my work because I, I have, I have Dimitri, then I have Dimitri Junior, then I have Dimitri, the third coming in. So just being able to say without feeling as though I'm being standoffish, without feeling as though I'm being uncooperative, but just being able to say I'm a, I'm a little buried here and then for the school committee to say, okay, what's a good time? And by the way, for, for the most part, that's what the school committees and members do anyway. You know, is this, is this a good time? That's all, I'm just saying that i- if the relationship, it just has to go both ways, that's all.
You said, okay.
All right, so that's, that's about it Suzanne. If we're now going to go into the uh school committee and liaison reports, if I could just continue a little bit to finish the policy discussion and then go to the others, maybe that'll work?
Sure.
Okay, so in addition to these policies which we were just discussing for either first or second readings, we also had a brief discussion about the fiscal management policy section D. Uh, so I've gone ahead and done a draft based on the B fac findings. The policies in Cambridge, Lexington, and Newton. I've shared that draft uh with administration and with Mariah, who's our chair of finance. And my hope is that at our next meeting on January, in January, we can take that up in greater detail and hopefully uh have this draft publicly posted relatively soon so that we also receive public input on it. Uh, and this is very important because uh when B fac issued their uh findings last year, they were hopeful that we would be uh reforming or at least um finding greater efficiencies in our procedures. And I think that we're all in agreement with that. Uh, and so it's a good idea to uh pick, pick up where we left off. Uh, then we also had a discussion under new business about uh attendance because many of you have been uh likely receiving some emails from parents who are somewhat distressed about what they think uh is an unfair uh process around attendance. Uh, specifically when some, when a child is marked as present or absent and within being marked absent, whether it's excused or unexcused. Uh, it's been explained uh to, it was explained to us uh at a recent meeting that DESI requires that there be a half day of instruction and that it's proven that there was a half day of instruction in order to be marked as present. So that is uh one restriction that we need to work within that's coming down from the state level. Uh, beyond that, it's somewhat of a fluid uh situation and discussions are ongoing about whether this is something that can be addressed procedurally or whether it's something that we'll need to come back to policy for a more uh formal modification. Uh, at this time, I'm confident that we can deal with this procedurally, uh but we'll certainly see how it goes. And if this needs to be added to the docket for the January policy meeting, we'll take it up again.
Is, is the issue pandemic specific or is it the issue in general about our attendance policy? Because that's gone round robin a lot of times.
I, I would say it's fairly pandemic specific, al- although that half day requirement exists regardless.
Yeah. But that's the counting of school, that's not, is that also for absences?
The, the issue has always been that the pandemic has uh heightened its awareness. Uh, because as you know, education's compulsory in Massachusetts, so students have to attend or be accounted for. Uh, and the, the school system is responsible for that. So after so many absences, you're required to report to the state. Somebody's not attending school and uh, you know, it's, we, we don't have a truancy officer, that kind of thing. But we are required to report. So it becomes very uh awkward and uncomfortable because the pandemic has um extenuating circumstances that in many ways are legitimate. And then trying to work with, within the, the guidelines and yet be uh understanding when there, when there's some individual issues, uh sometimes those two things are in conflict and sometimes irresolvable. And uh we're, we're dealing with a couple of those situations now. Uh, and it, it does, I think, require, uh, I, I agree David, that procedurally it would be much better to deal with it that way. But it does require that both the school department have a, a level of uh sort of flexibility, but that the parents too have uh a level of flexibility so that uh we can come together on, on what needs to happen. And, and, and in a, in a couple of cases, it, it may be more a matter of what's being said and what's being heard having the same meaning. So there's not so much misunderstanding as opposed to real, real violations. But drilling down to getting to what the real issue is uh in a, in a few cases um is, is, is right now, it, it feels a couple of them irresolvable and which we're dealing with. So uh, I, I mean, it, it, David is right that if it can be done procedurally, then we should do it that way. And if necessary, then we may have to have a policy around it.
Okay, we're um, we're, we're on the, on the last leg here. I can, I can feel people's energy. I mean, I don't know if we've got another twenty minutes in us or not. We're down to a subcommittee report, so that was policy. If you don't have a, a subcommittee report, that's okay, we'll put you on for next time. So let's see what we've got. We've got finance, capital improvements, curriculum, and superintendent search. Helen?
Okay, so I've got two. Uh, just uh FYIs for the school committee who weren't at the capital subcommittee meeting. We had a robust discussion about recreation department, uh sports and high school sports and youth basketball. Uh, and the idea that um, don't think we need to vote it because it's something we've always done, but they wanted to make sure we were okay. They checked with uh Dr. Chet and so uh director probably will be doing youth basketball. In our elementary schools, they won't be doing, or they set the present. And that's supposed to be doing uh adult basketball, mostly for COVID and cleaning and things like that. Um, and uh the high school sports uh will be starting up with their basketball also uh along with skiing and uh ice hockey, swimming, all the ones that the MIA has approved. The one that isn't uh be, going to be in the winter is wrestling. In addition, we had a discussion about the um beep extended day in a presentation from Dr. Watts about the need for uh an extended day that's a, a partnership with the um beep extended day with one of the extended days that exist or possibly with um one of the temples extended days. Uh, that's an ongoing conversation, but it's something that they want to explore because there's a great need for parents who have young kids and need that full day, even full year uh childcare. Uh, we talked with Charlie about the CIP for twenty twenty-two and basically there is no CIP for twenty twenty-two because most of the money, I mean, it's, it's complicated. Melissa gave us a rundown of the CIP and where the monies were going and how they're, we, we basically uh have been using some of the money for operational stuff as we know. The monies that came from the reserve uh for the vaccinations, um, excuse me, for the testing. Um, so uh there was in the pipeline some roofing projects that will happen in the spring at HEAT and um uh the new Lincoln cafeteria and the Pierce primary, small roofing projects. And that's it for capital, you got, well, almost it. You got the report on um the Driscoll School, which we wanted people to know about. The high school's moving along. We voted tonight some uh bids for uh the uh playground and the maintenance issues, et cetera. Um, anything else Susan, I'm looking at you.
I'm not on capital, uh, the, the Pierce Designer Selection.
Ah, thank you, thank you, I knew there was one more. And so on Thursday morning, we had three um firms which were vying for the Pierce School Project. Uh, myself, Ken Kaplan and um Bernard Green were the school, the Brookline representatives. And um the three firms were Jonathan Levy's, um, Bond Associates and uh Miller, Dyer Spears in a joint venture with Sasaki. And in the end, it was close, but uh Miller, Dyer Spears and Sasaki uh got the project. And I know that uh Tony and Leftfield will be working on a contract which we will be signing in January hopefully. And we'll be having a, a school building committee meeting also in January of the Pierce School Building. So that's very exciting. That's it for capital, I think.
Uh, Mariah, you have a question or comment?
Um, it's just a question, is the architect? I mean, usually we'd be having community meetings and I'm assuming there'll be community meetings scheduled for Zoom and whatever. So the Pierce community can expect to be hearing about that stuff in the spring.
Well, you can tell me, both you and Andy, but I think um the Pierce community knows who got the project, correct?
I don't think an announcement went out, no.
Oh, okay, then I'll contact Leslie tomorrow and make sure that that happens, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, it should, it should have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would also be helpful if uh any announcement to the Pierce community could include some background on the two firms. Uh, because they, at least one of them has done some high-profile things in the Boston area, like Sasaki, I think is working on the city hall.
I think what we could do, I think what we could do is include their presentation, which was public presentation in the announcements so people could take a look and, and see. I mean, that might be part of it. Okay, thank you, uh, thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks.
Susan?
And I just, I just want to say one thing about that. Um, the two other finalists were um William Ron and Jonathan Levy. Um, uh, without commenting on, on, on the choice, I would just say that there, you know, we have had unequivocally good experiences with both of those firms. Um, and it was in no way a, um, this, this should be in no way interpreted by anyone as a statement about that. We've had great experiences with both of those firms and um we'd be delighted if either of them had won. Um, but just, um, just so folks know that, um, it can be, it could be misread.
Well, everybody should know, these were three excellent, prominent and preeminent firms in Boston. So we, I think we really got the crème, the crème bidding, uh, you know, submitting uh their qualifications for this project. And, and there's some very interesting ideas in all of their, their, their things. And uh, it was, it was a difficult choice. It was a very difficult choice, very excellent presentations too.
Helen, while you have the floor, do you want to do uh superintendent's search update?
I do, I do. Um, so I, we have um finished the um, as, as people may remember, the school super, the superintendent's search committee and myself, uh, Dimitri, help me, Suzanne and, and David, good thing you're all here looking at me so I can know this. Determined that it made sense to continue the um interview committee from last time uh as much as possible for continuity, for ease of people knowing one another. The committee was a great committee to begin with. I then endeavored to call everybody and gauge their desire to continue. and the need to also try and get the committee smaller if possible, all the while trying to uh make sure that everybody was represented in terms of different layers of staff and um and parents, et cetera. So um if you uh if you want to maybe put up the listing and we're going to be putting, or do you not want to do that on here? Uh everybody got it in their packets. Uh I plan to have it put up on our website uh for the um search. I can talk about it and.
I think we, I think we were going to vote on it, right? We have to submit it to the school.
Oh, good point, good point. So let me go through and tell people they um, who it is that's on there and, and who they represent. And actually, I can't put it up there. So Mariah, my friend. Come on, I know you can do it.
This is the superintendent's, the um.
Interview committee with all the names.
Okay. Let me see if I can.
Robin just sent it out.
That's the one that's in the folder under 14, right, Robin? Or anyone here? Let me see if I got this right.
There are 17 members of the committee. In the meantime, while she's looking it up, it is a very diverse committee. I would say 19 of the members are minorities and it's, I think, almost evenly split between uh male and female. Et cetera. So um you know, the four of us, you know Malcolm Cawthon, who's the Brooklyn High School Medical Coordinator and Teacher. We added a kindergarten teacher, Nicole Chasse, who's agreed to, from the Ridley School, uh has agreed to be on the committee. Um Arthur Conquest was on it before, as was Malcolm. We also felt we needed a middle school teacher and um uh Jess Wondershuba was very gracious to help us find a, a um middle school teacher, Cecilia Costanzo, who teaches Spanish um at the Driscoll School. Um and then uh Grace Fernbach and was on the, the previous uh committee. Uh we determined that one PTO uh person uh in order to try and, you know, allow the middle school teacher and um uh to, to, and the kindergarten teacher to be on, we needed to sort of adjust. Um Grace Fernbach uh will be the PTO Board President, Lawrence School Parent, Marcia Ennis Mitchell is the medical parent and also the Boston Public Schools Administrator. Uh Kenny Kozol, uh all Grace, Marcia and Kenny and Linda were all on the committee before. Uh Kenny's the Curriculum Coordinator for K through 12 Performing Arts. Under Monoc is the Parents and Special Education Advisory Council CPAC Co-Chair. Uh we did not have uh someone at the time, well, we had um Lisa Richardson, who was HR person. Uh but we didn't have any of the deputy superintendents last time. And so we asked Casey No Miller, who graciously accepted to be on this. Uh and we needed to replace the student. Um and so I asked uh Steps to Success if they could recommend somebody along with asking Anthony. I got the answer first from Steps and spoke with uh Felicia Robinson, uh who seems to be a really uh good choice, very interested in picking our next, next leader. Um so she'll be the Brookline High School student. Uh Joseph Russo has agreed to be on the committee too as a Human Resource Director. Um Asa Sabellius was on the previous committee, uh the East School Parent, as was Karen Wong. Uh Parent and Brookline Foundation Board Member, Brookline uh High School PTO, Brookline Asian American. She covers a lot of things, Steering Committee and the Brookline High School China Exchange. She's very active and excellent. Uh she was also on the committee before. So that's the committee. Uh there I have had a couple of other people uh write to me. I, I explained to them what we had decided to do. Community members and certainly asked them to give me any input they would like and that there would be opportunities once we had a finalist beyond, first they could put it to do and input with the questionnaire, the survey that's gone out to everybody, I think, uh except maybe the school committee. But uh everybody else uh who has a student, who's a parent, who's a teacher, who's a staff member, uh this um questionnaire has, uh survey has gone out. So uh that being said, are there any questions?
So Helen, do you need a vote on this?
Yes. Yes, I think Dimitri, you were right. We do need, we do need a vote on this because um
Okay.
The committee's a little bit different. So let's, let's just do it and.
Okay. I take it you're moving it?
Yes, I'm moving it.
I'll second it. Any, any other questions before we vote? I'm moving us along, folks. Okay. Barbara?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, Jennifer?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So congratulations to your interview committee.
Thank you. And just to remind people, the uh job posting is out. It has been uh posted on the MAS C website, the MAS S website and a number of um minority websites that right now I can't remember the names, but I will get them for you the next time. Um and um I do know, I've been talking to people about doing recruiting. So we're working on, on it and we will be uh probably, the, the full committee with the ones that you just uh voted will be meeting on January 11th.
Thank you very much, Helen.
Okay, thank you.
You want to do curriculum?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to, um, it's late. I'm gonna try to be direct. Um we met on Tuesday, the 15th, December 15th. That is recorded if people want to take a look at it. Um we talked about curriculum and we talked about Portrait of a Graduate. We talked about curriculum for this year. We talked about um curriculum for this year and curriculum going forward and how that might be the same and different. Uh Michelle Herman was there um as well as some of our curriculum coordinators. So we had a nice group of people who were presenting. We spent the first hour talking about um the beginning of this work and what might be a, a Brookline curriculum with Michelle and the curriculum coordinators. Um and we based that conversation on things in the K eight schools. And we talked about the alignment of the state benchmarks and the alignment of our learning expectations. And then the second hour, we focused on the curriculum at the high school with department heads, um and Anthony Meyer. Uh it was a good conversation. The, the work is just in the beginning stages at this point, although there has been some nice work done. We have our next meeting um on Tuesday, January 19th. Um and we're going to get an update then on this curriculum work uh as well as a conversation about summer plans and interventions um about, you know, in thinking about how the year has progressed. I don't know if anyone else who was at the meeting wants to add anything, but that is, that is the short version of our meeting.
Jennifer, that was short and sweet. Thank you for the work you're doing. It was a very focused meeting. It was informative. Thank you. Mariah, do you want to talk about finance?
Uh sure, I'll give a very, I'm gonna beat Jennifer for how quick this is. Sorry, I have a guest. Um so uh we met uh last week, yeah, a week ago today, um and um discussed uh Brookline Adult and Community Education. And um as you know, that was deferred from tonight's discussion. So I, I will just say that we discussed it last week and we should have a fuller discussion um at our next meeting.
Great.
That was short and sweet too. Thank you. Are there any additional announcements, liaisons? Barbara?
Um I, I went to a BEF meeting um this past week and they were talking about, they had, they had teachers who had been involved in the summer uh professional development work that had been done, who were very enthusiastic about what they had done and what they had learned. Uh and that was BEF funded. I also on Friday went to the Metco, uh it's a yearly celebration that they held. They had very good turnout and it was on Friday when they had heard that their, their budget next year uh had been uh that the governor had agreed to the budget of 25 million for them la, next year. And they were very excited about that. Um I would mention that John Sills, who was a teacher in Brookline for a while, uh was presented um a citation as a, he was a retiring board member. He is, was uh the superintendent in Bedford, but he's been on the Metco Board for years. So that was a very good meeting. Um so that's what I've been doing.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh Mariah?
Uh can I give a report from CDICR?
Sure.
Okay, so uh we had a, this month's meeting two days ago when we had a great presentation by um Shoma Haake of Steps to Success. Um and um Jeanette Sargent, who is also from Steps to Success. Sorry, I'm just trying to make sure she doesn't fall off the chair. Um and um one of the things we heard about was um, and I'm just bringing it up now because it's uh an ongoing, I think, budget issue, um is the need for a Steps to Success social worker to support the students, um the PSP students who are participating. Um and also their interest in particularly given um COVID challenges and the challenges of youngest learners expanding Steps to Success to um K through three, because the program now starts at grade four.
Yeah, thank you. And Megan Sinney's following up on that as well. Uh so she sent us that. Uh I just want to mention under new business that uh the winter concert with all the high school groups is tomorrow night at seven. So there's a link available. It's promising to be an exceptional uh entertaining night. So I just invite people to participate. Um we do not have a need to go into executive session. So we actually can adjourn if people agree. So unless there's a last word from somebody, Jim, you always get the last word. You could say happy holidays, because actually.
I can say happy holidays and it's music to my ears when you said we don't have need for executive session. So uh that, and that means all's right with the world and uh, you know, have a great day tomorrow.
What, what did you decide, Jim? What did you call?
All right, well, well, it's already gone out on the thing. There'll be no, there'll be a traditional snow day tomorrow.
Okay.
So there'll be no school, all the schools are closed, not able to get the snow cleared away, but uh it'll be a traditional snow day. Uh the offices will be open. So I'll be there to hear all the accolades for what a great decision. I'll be there for that. And I'm looking forward to it. But i- I appreciate the conversation tonight. I, I really thought that was, that was outstanding in terms of where I was in terms of the discussion. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And it, it is uh Suzanne, we moved the meeting along. You, you actually said drum roll. I think you were referencing the uh MOA, MOU, whatever it is. But nevertheless, uh the spirit and, and the energy, I mean, here it is, 10:30 at night and uh we're all fired up and, and engaged in some, some terrific things that are going on here. And Mariah, welcome to the finance committee. You're gonna have a blast. Uh as we go. So thank you, Suzanne. I say that uh to follow your lead. I'm, I'm ready to sign off.
Okay, you, you get the last word. Happy holidays to everybody. We will see you.
Yeah. And a healthy new year to everybody.
That's right.
Uh I am sorry that we haven't been able to have a gathering, celebration of some kind in person, but you know, someday we'll meet again, so.
Someday. That's right. Okay.
Oh, wait, I have, one, I'm sorry, I mean, I have one very good thing to tell you guys. Can I tell you very good news to end on?
Yeah.
So Canaan McKenzie, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Canaan McKenzie, um who was our panel one chair, moved uh to Beverly, I think. Um and uh she was just caucus into the school committee there.
Oh.
Oh, that's great. That's great.
That's fast work.
Wait a minute. She was on our committee. She lived in Brookline. She moved?
That's weird.
She was, so she was, she lived in Brookline. She was the panel one co-chair. For the summer, this fall, she moved to Beverly. Um and she was just caucus in um as the co-chair. It was a unanimous vote. Um so um anyway, so it's kind of off, uh the ripples. It's sort of the ripples. Um I thought you might want to know that. It's good news.
You, you scratch anybody and you find a Brookline experience, it's, it's just there.
All roads lead back to.
All roads lead. That's right. Okay, well, Suzanne, thank you for having, and have a great holiday.
You too, Jim.
Yeah, thank you.
Rest up, I hope.
Yeah.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Thank you.